Mr. Nixon, can you see if Wind Cam has us? I don't see them here. So we'll be going live in just a moment, everyone. We're just waiting to make sure.
Brian's, that's on the list.
Oh, she is? Okay.
Yeah, at the bottom.
Okay, let me um. So Wind Cam, if you could just let us know when you are ready to go. Okay, well, thank you so much. We are ready to call to order. So I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight to the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one Regular School Committee meeting. We have a lengthy agenda tonight. We have student representatives coming, and I see we have Caroline here. Thank you for coming. We have public comments. We have report and discussion items. We have the mascot update. We have COVID-nineteen district update. We have interim superintendent update. We have fiscal year twenty-two budget update. Your superintendent-in-tenant evaluation process update. We have a policy subcommittee update. Then we have action items. We have some WEE grants to approve. We have a job description to approve. We have program studies from McCall Winchester High School, which we reviewed before vacation to approve. We have vote to approve the superintendent evaluation focus areas. We do not, I believe, have any minutes to approve tonight. I believe they have been pushed off to next week. And we have vote to eliminate a redundant policy. Chair report, superintendent report, future agenda items, and future meetings. And with that, I would love to welcome Caroline to give us a student report. We are so happy you've come, and my apologies, I usually send a reminder and but somehow you, of course, made it even without my reminder. So thank you so much.
Hi, no, that's really fine. Evan couldn't make it tonight, but I'm just gonna give a quick update. Not too much going on. Today was the start of the new sports season this year called Fall Two, which is kind of squeezed in between the winter season that just ended. And it's gonna be before the spring sports season this year. That just started. That's like girls volleyball, swimming, like indoor track and stuff like that. The boys' basketball team, their season just finished. It was during the winter season, but they won the league for the first time since nineteen forty-seven. So that was really exciting for them, even though only live streaming could watch. Today, the high school students got the email for the WHS COVID pool testing, which is like a volunteer testing thing. I don't know too much about that. I haven't taken a good look at the email yet, but that's very exciting. I know a lot of my friends were talking about that already. So it was really cool that they're starting to do that. And then Student Council is just in the early stages of planning a virtual night of the arts like we do every year, which we usually do on a half day in March, I believe, but this year it's just gonna kind of be like an online virtual event where we're gonna have like art on display and like videos of live performances and stuff. We're working on planning that. And that's it. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you so much. Are you finding that settling in well after the vacation? I hope, I hope it was restful, or I hope it felt like a vacation despite COVID. I think settling back quickly back into school?
Yeah, yeah, things are good. Kind of a nice, a nice break, even though it didn't go anywhere. Stuck around.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for coming. As always, please feel free to stick around. We have a lot of exciting stuff to talk about, as I mentioned, and we always like your input and your participation. So feel free to stay as long as you can, but I also know, as always, it's a school night. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move into public comment. And before we start public comment, I'd like to remind everyone that public comment is an opportunity for you to come and speak on matters under the purview of the school committee. It is not a dialogue. It is not a question and answer session. We welcome you to speak, and what we will be doing in a moment is we'll be lowering all hands and allowing you to raise your hands. Your digital hands, that is. You should see it on the bottom of the right panel, I believe, or in the bottom, in the middle of the screen. It's always a little bit different. And we will endeavor to stick to our policy guideline of twenty minutes and three minutes per participant. So if you raise your hand, we will elevate you and welcome you to speak. So please feel free and go ahead and raise your hands, and I'm going to get over here. And I will elevate Erica Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman, if you could state your name and address for the committee?
Can you hear me? Okay.
A little loud.
Sorry, okay. So my name is Erica Hoffman. It's seven Fairlane Terrace in Winchester. I'd like to address the school committee and Dr. Evans to please address the dyslexia letter that was sent on February twelfth, where they stand and what they're doing regarding to the items and the action points that they mentioned in the dyslexia letter. Because I believe there hasn't been a response from the school committee or Dr. Evans. Also, I wanted to say that today I watched the Governor Baker's press conference with Commissioner Riley, and I applaud them for finally announcing the importance of in-person learning, particularly for the elementary-age children. It has given me a little hope that we will see five days in-person learning this year and in the fall. Subsequently, I would like to bring to the attention to those listening in the community and to remind Dr. Evans and the school committee of the following correspondence. On November nineteenth, the superintendent update email contained the following paragraph. "The District COVID-nineteen Planning and Implementation Team is working on several options for the second semester that we hope will include more in-person learning time. Grade six to twelve schedules are likely to change significantly at that time. For this reason, we would ask that families reconsider or considering a change for hybrid to full remote, wait until the second semester if possible." An email from Dr. Evans on January fourth states the following. "District personnel have been reviewing options for increasing in-person learning opportunities in the district. Many of the issues like staffing, space, and cohorting that required the district to implement the hybrid or full remote options remain in place and limit flexibility, especially for students in grades six to twelve. At this time, it's unlikely we will see a significant change in the middle-high school hybrid models. Remain committed to finding ways to increase the number of in-person days and increasing literacy support for our younger learners in grades kindergarten and first. And we hope that to make similar changes to students in grades two to five and additional federal funding becomes available." My superintendent's update email from today, February twenty-third, states, "Return to school options for K to five students. As you know, principals and district administrators have been working to review several options for a transition to increased in-person learning for many months, especially in the K to five level. While each return option has many associated complex challenges and hard choices, it is time to narrow those choices and bring them forward to the school committee for review and vote. As we worked on return plans, we anticipated eagerly a waste of further information from the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, State Public Health, and the Governor's Office that would guide us with this process. But it appears that our long-hoped for vaccination for staff members are months away from completion, and recent CDC return-to-school guidelines direct conflict with many recommendations supported by DSE. You are likely to hear that DC Commissioner announced today that he expects all schools to return to five-day in-person learning in April. Districts were given no choice of this mandate and little guidance or support to make this happen safely. This conflicting and incomplete guidance from the DC is very frustrating for us all. We are left to make the best decisions possible for our Winchester students and are committed to doing so. We want nothing more than to have all students back safely in school. I plan to convene this week with a Winchester Public School K to five working group, drawn from members of the District COVID-nineteen Planning and Implementation Team. This working group will include principals, teachers, and parents, and will narrow options and present them to the school committee for feedback at the March sixteenth meeting. The decision process will include family, staff surveys, and available options, and we will look forward to your feedback." DSE asked for our three plans back in the summer for full remote, hybrid, and full in-person. This is not new. We have always needed a full in-person plan. The emails from Dr. Evans in November and January were only provided to give us a false sense to the school community that herself and the team have been working on a more in-person plan. It is obvious from today's email that the school committee and administration have not been working with the District COVID-nineteen Planning and Implementation Team on more in-person learning plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional public comment, I will close public comment. Wait, I see one more. And I will keep a public comment. Now I see two. Okay, I just needed to give a moment. So I will elevate Michelle McCarthy. Ms. McCarthy, state your name and address for the committee.
Hi, my name is Michelle McCarthy. I live at twenty-nine Oxford, student Winchester. Thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work. I applaud you all. I know how much you're working and on all the volunteer hours. Unbelievable during this time. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I guess I'm just looking for some exciting news. I was excited to hear the governor today, and then we got Judy Evans' email, and so I just wanted to hear a little bit more about maybe expectations. I think you all know, I've still, I've been pushing a lot for possibly Wednesdays to be more in-person. I know there's so many moving parts. I have children at the Ambrose Elementary School and children at the middle school. So I really, I understand how difficult scheduling is with so many children in place. But would just love to hear if you have had any time to absorb the governor's press conference today. You know, if Winchester will consider the three feet that he said, and also what does that mean for Winchester, for the elementary, and for the middle school? I'm not trying to leave the high school students out. I just, I don't have any children there, but I would love to hear your thoughts about the three feet and Wednesdays or anything you're thinking about for April. Would just love to hear more about that. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, and thank you also for the kind words. I will return you to Tandy, and I will elevate Ms. Brady. Ms. Brady, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, I'm sorry. This is actually Seamus. Sorry about that.
That's okay, Mr. Brady. If you state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, this is Seamus Brady, fifteen Clementus Street, and I'm speaking not in my capacity as a finance committee member, but rather in my capacity as a citizen of Winchester. I just wanted to commend and thank the school committee on their great interim superintendent search. I think you all did a great job as someone who's worked with four superintendents. I was very impressed with both candidates, and I think you did an excellent job in selecting a candidate who will really be an excellent leader for our district. I know the candidate and have known of him for quite some time. So again, I just want to compliment everyone who ran the search committee and then you all as a school committee for allowing us to get such a great candidate for an interim position. It's one of the more impressive interim candidates I've seen hired in my career. So I just wanted to congratulate you all and thank you all for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brady, and we're thrilled, too. I will seeing any additional public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment and thank everyone who came tonight to speak. I would, usually I reserve for my chair report making comments, but since I want to make sure that everyone's here gets a chance to hear it, I want to give a plug to the, I just need to find the exact information. There will be a Morocco culvert flood mitigation project and Morocco school immediate repair information, public information session on Thursday, February twenty-fifth at six PM. You should be able to get the Zoom information by going to the townwide calendar. But we will also, I will try to make available at some point so that we can get that to everyone, but I just want to make sure everybody who wants to be able to come to that will have an opportunity. So again, that's Thursday night on February twenty-fifth at six PM. And I'll repeat this during chair report, but I suspect we won't have sixty-four attendees by the time we make it to my chair report tonight. So I just wanted to give a plug for that. And with that, I would like to move on to the first report and discussion item, which is the mascot update. And we have a number of guests who need to be elevated. So if you'll give us a moment, we will work through that, and then we will proceed. Ms. Bollinger, is that, everyone, are we missing somebody? One, okay.
I am still looking for Mr. Mahoney, but maybe you are.
Mr. Mahoney has already been elevated. He's right there waving.
Oh, yeah, I was busy looking for students.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bollinger is much more facile at that than I am, so I need her assistance. Mr. Mahoney, welcome. I assume that you are going to kick this off, and I will give you also sharing privileges in case you want to share something.
We do. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us. We are very excited. This is a watershed moment in the history of Winchester High School, as well as the entire community. Our process tonight, I will be reading a lengthy, detailed report of the dates and times and what we did, how we did it. And then the students will be presenting a short slideshow of part of our thought process and then presenting a sort of a grand finale of our recommendation to the school committee. I want to reiterate that we're making a recommendation to the school committee. Nothing has been accepted or voted upon, and this has actually been a pretty well-kept secret in the community. So we're pretty, we're pretty proud of that. But most importantly, I'm gonna read some names tonight, and they're representing nineteen people that made up this working group, the rebranding committee, and I could not be more proud of them. They're a hand-selected group of people on both sides of the argument. Some, some points, extreme sides of the argument, as well as people that were in the middle. And everybody came together, compromised, worked together to bring the community forward and to transition Winchester High School and the community into something new going forward that a lot of people can get behind. So I'll talk about that in a little bit. But I do want to just share the beginning of the presentation in a second.
Mr. Chairman, just point of information, can we pause? I want, I don't know if Wind Cam is aware. It looks like they have a Windows update announcement on their screen, and that's blocking those at home watching on Wind Cam to see what Mr. Mahoney's about to share. Those of us on Zoom are not seeing that. That is on Wind Cam feed if they're able to do something about it.
Thank you. I would reiterate what Mr. Nixon just said to Wind Cam. I'm not able to see what, what's blocking it. How much of the space is being blocked on Wind Cam?
Well, there's a big blue box right in the middle of the presentation. We just we just may have to go it here without it, and perhaps Wind Cam will record, and they can always rebroadcast without this box, I hope.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. So anybody on Zoom should be able to have the unblocked presentation.
We can always share the, we can share the, it's only eight slides, and we can share that out with the community following the presentation as well.
Thank you very much.
So on July twenty-eighth, the Winchester Public Schools School Committee voted unanimously on the following two items. Motion one, the Winchester Public Schools shall no longer appropriate names, images, or practices from Native American, Alaskan, Alaskan Native cultures or specific American Indian, Alaskan Native tribes, including for any team name, logo, or mascot. Motion two, the superintendent of the school shall develop, per school committee review, a transitional plan for the new Winchester High School logo and/or mascot, including scope, cost, and timeline. The plan shall be inclusive of the school and parent community and honor the achievements of our students, both past and present. So that was the charge that this group was given, and I want to go over the steps by steps, but throughout the entire process, we took every step we could possibly take to make this as a transparent process as possible. And we could not be more proud about that, because every bit of data and information was shared with the community as we went along, and everybody in the entire community, not just the schools, was given an opportunity to weigh in. In early August, the Winchester Public Schools School Committee adopted a transition plan put forth by Dr. Judith Evans in the Winchester High School Administration to begin the process of selecting a new Winchester High School mascot and name. In mid-August, Winchester High School Administration reached out to the Winchester High School students and the greater community to create a coalition of students, faculty, coaches, parents, and community members whose purpose was to develop the process and timeline to transition Winchester High School to a new school identity. Potential volunteers were asked to submit their names via an online form and state why they were interested in being a member of the coalition. We had over seventy-five people volunteer to be part of this process. The names were chosen because we wanted to represent all sides of the argument, again, extreme sides of the argument as well as the middle. The WHS Administration then chose these candidates. And the names will be, or the names are, excuse me, grade twelve, Lulu Girardi, Brendan Gill, Luca Tedesco, and Thalia Sakarofos. Grade eleven, Varan Swamenithen, Roxy Arnett, and Stephen Birchfield. Grade ten, Ada Norton, and Thomas Morier. And grade nine, Ella Mathis. We also had PFA co-president Maya Harrison. Maya is a parent of an eighth, tenth, and eleventh grader. We have the Winchester Sports Foundation member Paul Maganaro, who's also a parent of a twelfth grader. Creative advisor Sean McDowell, who's also a parent of a ninth and eleventh grader. Our faculty representatives were John Fleming, who also coaches three sports and is the alumni board president. Faculty Joel Buford, who is our chorus and performing arts teacher. Suzanne Anso, who is our guidance counselor and coach. A parent-coach representative was Phil Royland, who's also featured here tonight. He's a lacrosse coach, alumni parent, and a parent of a ninth grader. And coach and alumni member Diana Matthews. We also had administration Mr. John Dupuy, myself, and athletic director Mr. Aria. So hopefully, everybody hears those names and understands the true cross-section of our community that's represented there. And again, these people, I want to applaud them. I want to laud them for coming together and working together to be part of the solution. You know, I could not be prouder than any member of this community that we worked with. It was really something that hopefully the whole community sees that here's a group of people that were on opposite sides of an argument, and they came together for the greater good, found a solution. They were part of the solution, and they're able to move their school and community forward. So I want to publicly thank them and commend them, and hopefully if people see them, they know what they've done for their community. The WHS Mascot Logo Committee was formed in late September and began meeting to develop a timeline and process for a smooth transition. A shared email account was created to answer any community questions that may occur, and multiple people on the committee had access to the email account. The following timeline does not cover the many virtual meetings and email discussions that went into this effort. In mid-October, the timeline and process was shared out to all Winchester High School, all Winchester High School, the greater community, and the Alumni Association. In late October, the WHS rebranding team sent out a request to all Winchester High School and the greater community and the Alumni Association, asking for feedback on what makes Winchester High School special. This was known as the Pillars. In early November, a reminder for the form, that the form would close out, closed, was sent out. In early January, the results of the Pillar Survey were shared out publicly to all Winchester High School, greater community, as well as the Alumni Association. Again, in early January, the request for the new WHS mascot and name submissions based on the community-wide pillar feedback was sent out to all Winchester High School, the greater community, and the Alumni Association. On February ninth, the WHS rebranding committee met to discuss the process and next steps. It was decided at that meeting that the committee had enough information from the community and community response that we can now make a final recommendation to the school committee. In tonight's meeting, we're going to present to you a little bit more of our process, and our first speaker will be Ada Norton.
Hi, everyone. So my name's Ada, and I'm super excited to help with the WHS rebranding team's mascot recommendation. So throughout the process, we started out by making a mission statement, and so here's just a little reflection from that. So throughout these few months, we've basically stuck to our mission statement of trying to be a voice for all. We've made progress, and we collected data that came straight from the entire Winchester community. We engaged the community to provide mascot submissions that focused around the four pillars that made Winchester High School what it is today. Academic excellence, community, inclusivity, pride, and unity. That's actually five, sorry. We've obtained full transparency and open communication throughout the entire process and stuck to our mission statement.
Our next presenter is Stephen Birchfield. I believe, Stephen, you may be muted. Stephen, if you can hear us?
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay, you're muted. That's okay.
Yeah. My internet.
Totally understand.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you well. Sometimes if you turn off your image, it actually reduces the internet, and then you can actually get a better job.
I'm sorry. So our submission. And so our submission collection process was a multifaceted approach. We made sure that I'm sorry. Sorry, here, I think my internet came back.
Yeah, we can hear you well. Yes, we can hear you well. Don't worry, we're good.
Okay. Now, our submission collection process was a multifaceted approach. Uh, we made sure to include the diversity of the, the diversity of opinions in the committee, school, and Winchester. Um, as Mr. Mahoney mentioned, we were transparent in our feedback opportunities that we provided throughout our process, and in December twenty twenty, we sent out a form, uh, asking about, asking the community what our mascot should be. Um, and we received our four responses to this, uh, online form, and there was one response that received seventy-six votes. The most out of any.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, we're going to have Roxy Arnett now present.
So we believe that our recommendation honors the history of our town in a more inclusive and less controversial way, in a manner that spotlights and recognizes our students more so than a particular figure, figure. The recommendation was clearly the most popular submission with the greatest share of votes, and its tradition in our town goes as far back as nineteen oh five.
Our next presenter will be Brendan Gill.
How's it going? Uh, so, as the Sajin will be missed for many, we tried to think of many ways for us to continue having the history behind Winchester and honoring our last, our past, so we decided to come up with the red and black.
And our final presenter will be Lulu Girardi. So officially, before we get to Lulu officially, our recommendation will be going, uh, what is past is now present or future. We're gonna, we'd like to be known as the red and black.
Hi, everyone. Um, so if this mascot is, uh, accepted by the Winchester School Committee, we have a couple steps moving forward. First, we will announce the decision to the entire community, which I'm sure some of them already caught on. Um, and then we will begin to, um, design a mascot, um, like a physical mascot for the red and black, which will be very much, uh, led by the students at Winchester High School, um, where they will be able to submit their art, so we can pick one that comes from a Winchester student. Uh, along with creating a new physical mascot, we will be create, uh, dedicating the wing by the school gym at WHS to a historical, um, memorabilia of the Sajin's history to honor our past.
Thank you, Lulu. A few points of clarity. Um, we're not looking for an, an actual mascot like a cartoon character. We're, we're talking about a font style and artistic design of the red and black. Um, and that'll be going out to, for students, a student art submission, student art contest. And we won't be dedicating the entire wing over by PE. We'll be doing, um, a cabinet area where the trophies are currently, as a museum piece. A few points, uh, just to follow up the kids. Again, I could not be prouder of these kids as well as the, the adults on the committee. We love the idea of honoring the past, honoring the history, because it respects, it respects a lot of people and what they did before us. It also makes us very unique. We could not find another high school in the country that would be, that would be called the same thing as the red and black. Um, and it puts the spotlight on our students, our student athletes, our student performers, rather than a mascot or, or cartoon character of any kind. So it really, you know, our focus will be the school and the students and, and nothing else, and we're, we're proud of that. And also, again, standing out is something that Winchester High School likes to do, so being known as the red and black is, is something to be proud of. And we'll take any questions that, uh, the school committee may have, and Mr. Royland's here as the parent representative and coach and alumni as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney, and, and a huge thank you to all of the student representatives. Uh, this is, uh, obviously, it's always hard to put yourself out, um, in front of the public, not just talking about coming to the meeting tonight, but putting yourself out in front of your peers, in front of the adults in the community, in front of the alumni in the community. And, uh, you guys, uh, I, I know you worked hard. I've been following along with what's been taking place. And, and I really appreciate, I, I speak for the whole committee, I, I'm sure, when I say we really appreciate everything you've put into, uh, to, to making this, uh, recommendation a reality, and, uh, so thank you. And with that, I would like to open it up to questions or comments from the committee. And I see that Ms. Marshat has her hand raised. Ms. Marshat.
Um, Winchester is exceptional for many reasons, but I think this process has put us way over the top. Um, I really want to thank everyone, especially the students and the parents who really struggled with this decision and for whom the mascot, the previous mascot meant a lot and symbolized a lot. But you came together in a, in a very controversial, on a controversial topic, and you were able to come to a very beautiful moment in presenting it to us today, and I couldn't, I couldn't ask for more in a public education system than a system that is able to bring together students with varied opinions, varied backgrounds, and come to a consensus on something. And, and so I'm overjoyed. I'm incredibly proud of us, and especially the students and the leadership of of Mr. Mahoney and Dr. Evans in this process. Um, I am humbled, and you guys have truly given me hope for the future, um, that no matter what, there are people out there who are willing to come to the table and have a civil deliberation on an issue and then coming to a, a really beautiful consensus that also honors the past that so many have, have valued, especially, um, the athlete we lost, Mr. Gill. I honor that. And I hope you feel our love and appreciation that you were able to come to the table and do this. It means the world to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshat. Ms. Bergs from ICU, have your hand raised. But you're also still muted, too.
Too many clicks. I also wanted to just take a moment to thank the, the students and parents and um, something that Mr. Mahoney said at the beginning stuck with me, which was that it was a wide range of the community, and it was a spectrum of ideas. And I think that, um, this really is, illustrates how, um, some of the best decisions we can come to are when we hear from uh, people with a wide spectrum of ideas, and when they can all come to the table and collaborate. Um, I, um, I sort of envy the people in the room. I would have liked to have been, uh, a little spider on the wall to be able to listen to some of those conversations, because I'm sure you had a lot of rich discussions and learned a lot about each other in the process as well. And I really applaud you for being able to bring something to us that, um, you are happy and satisfied and proud of. And I think that, um, you should be proud of yourselves for the work that you've done as part of this. Um, I was wondering, I just had one quick question. Um, I, I myself have heard some stories historically. I followed the work that you did and saw um, some of the history behind the red and black, but I was wondering if any of the students, um, would like to share with us, you alluded to that history, if you'd like to share with us what that history is that, um, you're honoring by that, because not everybody with us tonight may, um, have taken part in the process or understand the historical perspective behind red and black.
Thank you, Ms. Bergs. And if anybody, um, who came to present tonight wants to speak, um, please consider that question to you.
Um, so what I think of when I hear of the red and black as our mascot is that, um, it was the mascot for many, many years, as you guys probably know, um, before the Sajin was adopted as the WHS mascot. So when we were looking through all the submissions, not only was this the one with like the highest number of votes, but it's also the one that we thought would bring the community together the most. Since it was like going back to our history, like a lot of people thought that the Sajin did, and we thought that we were sort of going back in a more non-controversial way. And we think that it'll help unify us because we can like reflect on the accomplishments that were made, um, like before we were here, and we can also be really excited to move forward. Um, yeah.
Thank you very much. If anybody else, um, who, who spoke, came tonight, wanted to, um, speak on that, I would welcome anyone else to. I don't want anybody to feel like you have an opportunity. Yes, Stephen.
Yeah, additionally, you know, that, um, the red and black is the name of our school newspaper, and for a lot of places, the school newspaper and the mascot reflect each other. So that's why I feel like, you know, the red and black is important, not as the, not only as it's, you know, important to their history, but important in our, our, uh, our continuing with keeping everything in the same realm, if that makes sense. Um, you know, it'll keep our colors, it'll make our, um, we can keep the W on many of our Winchester, uh, uniforms and Winchester around the school. And I think that's a good way that we balanced everything out.
Thank you very much. Uh, certainly, anyone else who has anything they want to add, and also committee members, if they have any additional questions, I would, or comments, I would welcome, uh, anyone else. Ms. Boloniers.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the contribution of all of you and all your time and your effort, um, to really come together and work through this whole process together. Um, I thought that the process overall and the communication this entire time period since last August, uh, beginning of last August, um, what you as students and community have done was just excellent. I really appreciated all of your communication. Um, and I love the fact, I love the uniqueness and the spotlight on the red and the black, um, from Winchester High School. And I also really appreciate that you've gone back in our history uh, to these earlier time periods when the red and black was part of us originally. Um, and I love that sense of continuity and how you have used this to unify the community. So my hat's off to all of you. I really appreciate everything that you've done and how you've brought together different parts of the community and worked together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boloniers. Uh, any additional questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, I will again thank you for a tremendous, um, amount of work and thought and care that went into this. I, um, I was, I am an alumnus of Winchester High School, and the red and the black means a lot to me. I was on the newspaper, so I, actually, I, I tie back when you mention the newspaper, that comes right to mind. And I think it will, uh, be helpful for, uh, alumni to feel a tie back to the school, and it will help as we move forward for our, the next generation, uh, both tie back and look forward. So I, I'm, I'm really pleased with this recommendation. Um, I would, uh, suggest that this is something that we have as an agenda item, as an action item, to consider and vote on this at either our next meeting or the following meeting, just depends on the agendas that we have. And I would certainly, uh, welcome you all to be in attendance at that meeting, uh, when we do that, and, uh, uh, Mr. Mahoney, I don't know if you have any final thoughts, or Dr. Evans, before we, um, before we move on?
Uh, I'll welcome Mr. Mahoney to, to see us out on this agenda item. I just want to thank everybody for your hard work, your sensitivity and your inclusivity um, with which you approach this task. Um, I couldn't be prouder of our students every day, and, um, as Mr. Mahoney gave me updates on the, on the group's progress, I knew how thoughtful everyone was being and how open-minded, and so thank you again. Um, we're really proud of all of you. Uh, Mr. Mahoney, any last thoughts before we close out this?
I've said it all, and everyone else has said it. I'm, I'm proud of our transparency. I'm, I'm proud of our kids. I'm proud of the adults on the, on the committee as well, and it's just whether you, whether you wanted this HM, or you didn't want this HM, whether you like our suggestion, whether you don't like it, I hope we can all recognize how a group of people on opposite sides of the, uh, opposite sides of an argument came together to be part of the solution, worked together, and, and moved, uh, moved the boulder forward, and I'm, I'm just so proud of that. And that's like, it's the kids, it's the adults, it's the community that was able, able to allow us to do this.
Thank you very much. Uh, really appreciate it. And, uh, yeah. So I, I would welcome, I think if any of you want to stay on in the meeting, I think we actually have to send you back to attendees. If you're logging out, you can just log out, and we'll see you later. But what we will do is we'll send you back to being attendees, and we'll continue on with the rest of our meeting. Um, so give us a moment, and thank you all for coming tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Go red and black.
Thank you.
Mr. Redd Ali, you're much faster at that than I am.
I was thinking you were faster than I was, because I'm, I'm we still have Roxy. Let me get, okay, there you go. Uh, now, did we accidentally send someone, uh, to an attendee who shouldn't be here? Is anybody missing? Could I occasionally have done that? I've sent someone there accidentally. I don't think so. Okay. Um, well, uh, that was great, and as I said, that should be an action item, uh, to consider at a future meeting. And with that, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, which is the COVID-nineteen district update, and for this, we would like to elevate um, Ms. Murphy, who I, um, I hope is still here, because I may have mistakenly told her it was going to be first on the agenda item. I've got her. But I will, um, I will elevate her first, and then I will, there you are. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, for coming, and I will turn it over to Dr. Evans to kick us off, and, uh, and then we'll quickly include you in the conversation. So thank you so much, Dr. Evans.
Sure, happy to, uh, to see Ms. Murphy. Uh, we're frequent, uh, uh, contacters of each other to talk about COVID matters, and so, um, her help has been invaluable. Um, most recently, I want to thank her for, um, uh, giving the school department the benefit of, uh, just, um, who is helping us with our, um, pool testing pilot. Um, without the help of the public health department, we wouldn't, um, be able to have moved forward, uh, and we're excited to talk more about that tonight. So it probably would be most helpful for Ms. Murphy to, um, address a couple of things tonight. One is, you know, what is the status in the community of positive cases and in the schools? Um, and any, any trends or concerns that she's seeing, and then, um, also, we're going to talk tonight about the surprising, uh, and a kind of unexpected, um, turn of events where the Commission of Education has mandated, um, or will recommend to the Board of Education, uh, that all students return in full in just a few weeks. Um, there are implications for contact tracing and, um, uh, based on the number of, um, uh, students present in a classroom, and so Ms. Murphy and I have discussed this at length all the way through, but if she has any thoughts on that, we'd be, I'd be happy to hear them. So I'll turn it over to her, and she can give you, um, any updates that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Evans. Um, Ms. Murphy, I would just tag on there, um, any, uh, informations come from this, uh, CDC recommendations that have been or have not yet been adopted by the Mass, um, Department of Public Health, because I know that you had mentioned that not everything had been adopted yet. So, um, thank you again for coming tonight, and I apologize. I think I got the order of things wrong when I told you when you were coming, so thank you so much.
No, no worries. Um, if, if you don't mind, I, I do have a PowerPoint that I can share, so we can go over some of the data.
Yes, please, and you should have access to share.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So, right now, as everyone knows, we're seeing, and basically, we're seeing this throughout the state, is a trend of, of significant market decline of cases, and we are, uh, thankfully experiencing that in Winchester. It's a period of calm, although when I say that, I have to knock on wood. Okay, and so this data is going to, actually, first, why don't I go over the data from the, um, dashboard that I have captured in some slides here? Um, and so we updated- And so we update this weekly now. And so this past Monday, last night, it was updated. So we now have over a thousand cases confirmed in Winchester. And we know that number is probably bigger. In other words, some people have been ill without being confirmed by PCR analysis. But as of right now, we have 26 active cases, which is, which is very low. I think our contact traces are happy to have a little breather at this moment. So, you know, we have 1,036 cases where we covered and 15 total deaths of those, of those cases. And I, I just want to emphasize that the deaths that have occurred unfortunately among our residents have been folks that are, folks that are older in our community, mostly over the age of 80. And that's unfortunate. And getting into the school data, right now, we have six active confirmed cases, which is, which is also good to see. That that number is, is fairly low. It's always been low. And I, I think that we've always talked about how successful overall that we have been in keeping the schools open in a hybrid model and that, you know, it's been more successful certainly than the community has at limiting transmission. And so we are, we have been open a lot longer than I ever would have predicted, honestly, at the outset of the school year because no one knew frankly how this was going to go. But I am so thankful that the caseload has remained low. Overall, 228 cases amongst in-person staff and students within our school buildings. The positivity trend line or the positivity rates have declined dramatically, even in the surrounding communities. We are now down to 1.6% positivity rate, which is, which is quite low. And I'm happy to say that we're surrounded by towns that are now less than 5%. Reuben and Burlington especially, you'll see they enjoy a two point, a little over two point, well, just under 3% positivity rate. So, so this is all, all very good news. We're trending in the right direction. People often now ask me if I attribute this directly to the vaccination that's happening. And it's a little too early for me to feel confident in saying absolutely yes. I don't think anyone would say that. I think it is a factor, certainly. It's a contributing factor, but I, I think we need to wait and see a little longer how this, how this plays out. We've got to keep the vaccination efforts strong throughout the state. This is just the trend line of the positivity rate. You'll see an incredible decline there in, you know, since January, really. Once we got past that winter break surge, we had a big surge after Thanksgiving. We had a surge after the holiday break and the Christmas holiday period. And so now you'll see that that has dropped dramatically. This is just snapshot tables of our cases over time, these trend lines. Can see again, the, for our community cases, the table on the left, you'll see the, the line starting to trend slightly downwards. So for January, we had 313 total cases. Again, not where we have been previous to December, however, going in the right direction. And the table on the right is the, is the school community cases. For January, we had 87 total cases, which was certainly a, you know, a number that we can certainly do better. And I believe we are going to, to bear out better once we see our February data. Again, that was attributed to, I believe, the post-holiday, the post-winter break surge, as well as some other, some other events that were attributed to social gatherings in January. This is to break out the data even further. These are cases that are age five to 18. And while they're school-aged cases, we, it would take a little bit more effort for us to drill down into and to separate out those that are in this group that are private schooled and as well as remote only. But I think though, that percentage of students isn't as great as, as are those taking place in our in-person learning. So the N here is 224 cases and I total for this age group. And I just want to, to show and highlight that, you know, success is in recovery, right? No one has passed away amongst this age group in town. So that, that's obviously very good news and neither have there been any hospital admissions. And that is to say, no one has been admitted. However, people may have gone to the ER but been sent home. People may have been treated at their doctor's office. This isn't to say they didn't seek out medical help. It's just to say there have been no, no one was admitted in this age group from town. Oh, sorry. This is a chart of the age distribution and this has fluctuated over time. Perhaps the last time we spoke, I was talking about, you know, the 40 to 49 age group, or they were sort of leading the number of cases. Now this, you'll see, has changed. The age group 10 to 19 went up a little bit more. And it, it really seems to even out over a couple of age ranges here. But you'll see for yourself the breakdown here. And this will all be posted on our website as well. So afterwards, folks can go and look at this in more detail. This is an interesting trend line though for the age group. I wanted to show because it actually shows you what, what happened from December to January amongst the 17 to 18-year-olds. And it really stands out. But you can see over time, that trend line did increase. And we broke this out for, for ages five to 18 every, by groupings of two years. I think you'll see these trend lines start to go, you know, downward for the month of February, but you'll see that it did, it did ramp upward some, from December on. So this is a question that we have been asking for a little while. In terms of symptoms, who's presenting with symptoms amongst our cases? So in this age group, we see that 62% of, of our confirmed cases did present with symptoms or did report to us, us that they did experience symptoms. And we listed out exactly what those symptoms were. And these can be more than one were reported for one case, but this is just to show you the types of symptoms of the data that we collected. And these are based on what the state has asked us to ask of our confirmed cases. And to break it out even further, and it seems a little busy, but what I really want to highlight here is that the difference in age groups. I think people ask often, you know, well, what's the experience amongst elementary kids versus older kids? And so this is to help better clarify that. So the zero to four age range is more to capture the preschool age. And you'll see that 50% of those confirmed cases presented with symptoms or reported symptoms. Fever seemed to be the greatest symptom reported there. And then in our elementary school-aged kids, age five to 10, you'll see that 55% reported to us that they experienced one or more symptoms. Again, fever seemed to be the greatest symptom reported. And then as we look at the older students, middle school and high school, age 11 to 18, we had 66% report symptoms. So again, it was for the elementary range, 55% reported symptoms. And for the middle school and high school cases, 66% did, 66% reported symptoms. But I think what's an important distinction, not only are the older children reporting illness, 11% more reported illness, but I think it's important to note that the duration of illness was less and the severity of illness was less amongst our elementary school kids. That's an important distinction. And then 58% of 19 and older cases reported symptoms. And you'll see that the, in the middle school and high school symptoms, headache was, was a very common symptoms, common symptom. And yeah, so anyway, so I thought this was very interesting to break out. And we will, we can try to do a little more analysis of this. It just requires a bit of time and digging through, digging through the, the data. But happy to, if people have any queries that they would like us to do, we can certainly work on that. And this is simply to answer the question about confirmed cases broken down by race. 92% of our cases are reported as white and 7% Asian and 1% African-American. And I can break this out even further. However, these are what were reported to us upon our, our contact with cases. And just to give you some, some raw numbers around that, it was 182 reported being white, 13 Asian and two African-American. So that, that's the raw data around those percentages there. Does anybody have any questions on the, on the data, just before I touch on the other topics that were mentioned?
Any question? Thank you. Any questions? Anyone? So I, I have a question. If you go back to, toward the top where you have, I mean, it's pretty much the, the, one of the first couple of slides where you have the case of that one right there. Where we see the confirmed Winchester resident and in-person confirmed cases. They, the blue lines don't obviously track with each other. One blue line, the Winchester residents, we see the downturn and the Winchester district in-person students and staff continues to rise. I know you haven't, so my two questions would be sort of, one, I know you haven't analyzed February. And February has three or four fewer days, three fewer days than January. But are we going to start seeing that downturn in February for our students? And then my, I guess my follow-up question would be, it's, it's, I'm just in a thought, you know, it's lovely to see it go from 338 to 313 in Winchester residents. But we have to look and see that that is still, when we had 132 cases in November, that's almost two and a half times that. And we were shocked by that. So I just want to make sure that, I'm curious about your opinions about the magnitude. There's a direction and a magnitude. The magnitude seems still pretty high, but the direction is in the right direction. So I'm curious about those two questions, if you have any thought.
So the first question, your first question regarding February data, I do anticipate, based on what the numbers we've seen so far, that you'll see, you'll see the same downward trend. Yes. And sorry, the second part of your question?
I really, it's sort of, I don't know, just a thought is that, you know, the going downward from 338 to 313 is really nice to see. But I remember back in November, when it was 132 and we were gassed that it was twice as much as October. We're now two and a half times that. I'm just curious about your impressions. Is 313 a good number? Sort of your, your, your thoughts on it? I mean, because you're, you're watching this. I, I still see that as a very high number. But going in the right direction. Is that really just the only way to characterize it? I mean, high but going in the right direction?
Right, right. I think most communities experience the same post-holiday surges that we saw. And that was a very uncomfortable place to be. I'm hoping that that trend line continues downward. Because again, I agree with you that 313 is not where we, we want to be in one month's time because I know we can, we can do better. And I think there are several factors that will help us out, vaccination being one of them, although I don't know how important, I mean, not important, but I don't know. You know, it's going to take time, in other words, for that to continue and that trend. So do I, do we want to be here? No, no. I mean, you're correct. We can do much better than that. And, and I think we will be. Yeah, that's, that, I mean, that's about all I can say for that.
It was an open-ended question. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Ms. Bergstrom, you had your hand raised and then Ms. Marshant, you raised a second. But you're muted.
I have a follow-up on Mr. Vinalia's question on this. It was somewhat related. We saw an enormous rise after Thanksgiving holidays. It was only a couple of days off school. We also had a lot of testing around Thanksgiving and Christmas. I'm wondering if you're still seeing the same testing levels come in for Winchester that we saw around Thanksgiving and Christmas. And if you expect to see a rise in cases, you know, generally it's, you know, up to a week after the holiday that we start to see it, I believe. So I, I'm thinking of February break that we just came back from and wondering if you're anticipating a rise in that also? Or if you think we're really in a better place? And then I'll just add my second question because it's a couple of slides above that, so you can do both of them at once. And you had talked about 100% of students in the schools had recovered. Does that include students who are suffering post-COVID symptoms? Are they still counted as recovered? Does public health track that? And do we consider those students recover?
Right. So to answer the second part of your question first is, no, we don't track at the local level anyway, that, that data regarding post-infectious illness or lingering effects post the infectious period. So in other words, a recovered case is as soon as their infectious period is over and people can resume their normal daily activities and re-enter society, so to speak. So we don't know. Or, or in other words, I don't have that data. I don't have access to that data about beyond that time period. So recovered simply means they have stopped being infectious and cannot be, pose a risk to anyone else. And the first part of your question was in terms of testing. So the testing numbers you'll see here, so for Winchester, the 5,000, over 5,000 tests that was conducted, we're still at a very good rate of testing. And hopefully we can maintain that and we should, as we're adding, at least in the community. And we're adding some, some testing that I can, I can tell you a little bit about. Anyway, we're going to be adding testing events. So that coupled with the other avenues for testing should, should give people plenty of opportunity, you know, as well as the full testing pilot that's going to happen. So there are avenues to be tested. I'm hoping we can maintain those levels and people don't miss, don't have a false insecurity in that our positivity rate and our cases are starting to decline. I don't want people to think we're out of the woods yet. And so I do hope that our, the numbers for, of people being tested remains high or even higher. Quite honestly, because it's still, it's still necessary until we get more of the population vaccinated and see how that's going to play out. It's a very necessary tool that we have. And people should take advantage of it, absolutely.
And the post-February vacation?
Yes. So I was wondering that myself, how that would play out. And so far, it looks good. I think we would see, while it's early, I realize it's Tuesday, I real, I do believe we would have seen some indication of the effects of, you know, people's behavior over break. If, if they, you know, traveled or if they, you know, because not everybody necessarily goes away for the entire week. Not everybody gets or goes away at all, but may engage locally in activities that may be riskier. And we're not seeing that yet. And again, I need to knock on wood because.
Yes, you and me both.
But no, I'm not seeing any indication of that as of yet. So, and I really, I do truly believe that we would have.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marshant, your hand is raised.
Thank you. My question has to do with variances in the virus. Are you able to capture that through the testing that's being done? Whether we're seeing variances, whether there's any impact on our schools or schools in general in terms of the, the more infectious ones?
Right. So the gene sequencing for the variants that have been identified worldwide is being conducted in Massachusetts. I don't believe, excuse me, every case. I think they are taking, you know, a select few, a random selection of confirmed tests to do further analysis on that, on those. I think, so, so far they have identified the South African mutation as well as the UK mutation here in Massachusetts. How long it's been around is, is up for debate. I think once it's officially identified, you can assume or be naive to not assume that it hasn't been around long, right? So sequencing is being done to identify, identify it, but not every case. If, if one of our cases were to be identified as, as being a variant, they would, they would inform us and they would inform, we would inform the patient. But we have not been informed of that is the answer to, to your question of any of our cases thus far.
Any additional questions or comments on this presentation that Ms. Murphy gave?
Mr. Chin, I'll hold questions for, for later because I know we have more to the discussion, but I just want to jump in and ask the folks at WinCam. Let them know we have another Windows box popped up on the broadcast tonight if they can bring that down for folks watching at home. Thanks. If they can bring that down for folks watching at home. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Poloniers? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I just had a follow-up to Ms. Marchand's question. You had mentioned that sequencing was being done, but not every case. And I was just wondering what would trigger, um, sequencing to be done? Is there anything that triggers it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the criteria are, quite honestly. I'm sure travel may, international travel may play a factor in that. Although I don't know, you know, what percentage of targeted versus randomized the state is using. I don't know the formula. I'm happy to find out and I can, or ask the, pose the question to the state and I can get back to you, um, if they answer me.
Thank you so much. Um, I have a quick clarification question. As far as the total number of tests performed, uh, I know we haven't talked about pool testing and we will be talking about it a little bit later. Would a pool testing count as, how would that factor into, um, the data that you report? Um, if a pool tests twenty people, is that twenty P, and they're all negative, is that twenty additional negatives? Or is that one a negative, as far as when you took the number of tests and the percent positivity and everything?
Excuse me. So, I'm sorry. The official test results that will be reported to the state are the individuals' test results. So if a pool is negative, nothing will be reported to the state, right? So if we have a positive pool, everyone will be sampled individually. And those results, the individuals' results will be reported to the state and, and added to the data set, the official data set.
Okay, so the number of tests that you have, on, on one of your charts, you have the number of tests and the number of positives. That, that denominator of the number of tests would include, would not include those, um, those pool test. I just wanted to understand, so we, so I think that's important as we go forward. If that, um, the chart will have that sort of caveat as we roll out pool testing.
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, I welcome, uh, some, uh, you had some, uh, other things you were going to share with us, some questions.
Sorry. So I just wanted to mention that, um, uh, my office is in the process now with setting up community-wide testing. It would be available to any resident as well as any town employee on a weekly basis, perhaps twice a week. Um, still working out the details and also trying to find, you know, we're going to pilot this for one or two weeks to find out what, what works best for the majority of people, uh, you know, different times, different days. I was hoping to start on a Saturday, uh, and see how that went. But, um, in fact, I was hoping to start this coming Saturday. And it doesn't look like, uh, the ducks are in a row to make that happen. So it'll be the following week. But that will be something offered to the public very soon. Um, at first it will, there will be no charge for that. Um, however, going forward, we may, we may need to charge a nominal fee for that to recoup some, some of the money, um, because it's, it's not inexpensive. Um, and I, there will be a max on the number of tests we conduct in a week. So it should be somewhere in the range of three hundred and sixty people weekly.
Thank you.
And, um, can, if you don't mind, could I just touch on vaccination efforts?
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
So we have, uh, conducted visits to homebound people in our community. Uh, Kathy Whitaker spent three days going to everyone's home that we, uh, know have mobility issues and cannot leave their house. So we did, um, do that, which we are happy, happy to acquire the vaccine to be able to do that. That was a great achievement. Um, and if there are any other people out there in the community who we weren't able to reach, because they didn't self-identify or we haven't, we haven't known of, of them from previous interactions, please call the health department. Um, we will be holding clinics at the two housing authority properties, which is also great. That should be happening in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, however, the governor has scaled back, cause I'm sure you've heard, the ability for local health departments to vaccinate, um, beyond those two initiatives. Unfortunately, we were very, very disappointed that we cannot be part more part of this solution, part of this cure. After a year of, um, you know, of, of dealing with this, it's, it's disappointing. Just, I'll leave it there. But, um, hopefully at some point he'll change his mind and to allow, allow us to do something that we know we can do well. We know our community well. We know our residents the best. We know how to deliver the vaccine to large volumes of people in an efficient way. Um, and, and so, you know, we know we can do it. We're, we're, we're waiting for the vaccine to be able to do it. But for now, we will just, we'll take care of, of the two goals that I just mentioned. The two targeted, uh, groups.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Ms. Bergstrom, your question on the vaccination?
Yes, thank you. Um, Ms. Murphy, does that mean, um, um, if we, if the state has scaled back the ability of local health departments to do vaccinations, does that mean that when we reach the educators in the priority line for vaccinations, that that will not also be conducted locally? And that teachers will have to seek that out in other locations? Or do we not have that information yet?
I don't have that information. However, there is a, a large movement to put the pressure on the governor. And I know the MMA, Mass Municipal Association, wrote a letter specifically speaking to this point and advocating that local health be involved in delivering the vaccine to, uh, the school community, the staff. Because it's, it is the most efficient way to get it done. However, you know, we don't want to slow up the process either. So, you know, if the governor assures everyone that this can be done in a, in a better manner and more efficient way, then he can have at it. Um, however, I would argue that, um, we can certainly get it done. Give us the vaccine, we will get it done. However, it does remain an unanswered question, but we have not stopped advocating that this happen at a local level.
And then just out of curiosity and your thought process, would you then be sort of rolling that out over time? Because I can imagine with the, the symptoms that are experienced sometimes immediately following the vaccine, we might have to space that out if we had the ability to do it locally with our staff, so they weren't all experiencing symptoms on the same day.
Yeah, sure. So, right, no. And, and that was certainly a consideration when, when we did public respond, uh, first responders, right? So you can't have all your fire and police feeling ill at the same time, the same shift. So, um, yes, there, there's certainly ways that we can, you know, minimize impact. Um, the good news is, um, you know, people for the most part have been able to, while they felt a little, a little off, a little ill, it hasn't been too severe. Um, but certainly we do want to take that into consideration, and we will, we will. Certainly there's a way to, to make that, uh, happen without impacting the school community too much.
Great, thank you. And your point about first responders, having done it already with first responders is a good one. It's, uh, it's nice to know that it's a process. You guys have already tackled and you're on top of it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. If I could just add a, a comment, Brian, um, to that, the great concern that school, um, superintendents, district superintendents have about not doing the vaccination process in district is that if our individual educators have to fight for whatever available slots are open in a vaccination site that might be far away, like Gillette, they may lose half a day from instruction or a full day from instruction. And we would never hold anyone back from getting vaccinated at the earliest opportunity. But it's going to be extremely disruptive and we just don't have the staff to cover a lot of people leaving at unexpected times throughout the week. And we have hundreds and hundreds of employees. So it's a lot of people who need to get vaccinated and, um, uh, and, and asking them to seek out their own, um, slot. And, you know, giving them a lot of flexibility to go and do that during the school day is going to be extremely challenging. We had hoped that we could actually do it, we would have hoped to, to do it sometime during the vacation period. Ideally, we would have hoped, you know, that anybody available around could have done it, um, on a non-school day. And so, um, we're extremely disappointed that these huge, um, uh, vaccination sites are really the choice of the state. Public health folks and our nurses are extremely adept at, at vaccinating. We, we vaccinate our kids for the flu, um, and HPV. And, and I think we're really pretty cutting edge and, and have, have it all down and could do it easily, um, with minimal disruption. Uh, and so, uh, anyone out there listening or any, anyone on school committee who can get that across to the governor would be extremely, um, well-received by us because we are greatly concerned about the rollout of this process. No, it's not only, and if it's a two-step vaccine, it means people missing work twice, um, for the, for the initial and the second shot. So that is, uh, that is a concern to us.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Mr. Nixon?
Well, I was just on that very point. I was going to wonder, Dr. Evans, if maybe MASSS wants to co-sign that letter from the Mass Municipal Association along with the Mass Teachers Association and MASC. Um, it's an excellent point. I mean, to my mind, the idea of mass vaccination sites are logistically much easier on the state side because we're talking about millions and millions of doses. So the idea that they have to go to far fewer number of sites, facilities that are designed to accommodate large numbers of people certainly makes the lift a little bit easier on the state side and puts the burden on everybody else to get there and the consequences for being away from work or family or kids or, or what have you. Um, I, so really my question now i- is to the chair, to the superintendent, because we have a number of sort of sub-bullets on this topic tonight for conversation around COVID and planning and so forth. And we did hear during public comment reference to an email the superintendent sent out, sent out with some thoughts towards a, a subcommittee with some, you know, planning for the spring. Will we, um, will we be hearing more about that? Is there an opportunity to talk a bit about that, Mr. Chairman? Either tonight or now or soon? If so, I, I had some questions for Ms. Murphy, but I don't want to sort of make, take those questions out of turn.
So, uh, Mr. Nixon, uh, we were being respectful of Ms. Murphy's time. So we wanted to, uh, get sort of what she could convey with us and anything, presentation, any sort of questions from her. Uh, then I would turn it back over to Dr. Evans and hopefully Ms. Murphy could stay on a little bit longer as we talked about things, again, sort of under the health department's purview. And then, uh, at that point in time, um, we probably will continue on. So, cause I know Dr. Evans has intention to talk about a number of the things that, as you mentioned, on the COVID-nineteen district update. So I would, um, if, if, I would focus on any questions you have from Ms. Murphy. Um, and at the end of the presentation, uh, at, at the end of what Dr. Evans has to present, um, come back to anything for her.
So I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I may have some questions for her when we, when we get to the sort of the planning discussion. The only other question that I had, um, because we have a, um, Winchester is well-represented by our healthcare community, um, from, from a variety of first responders and hospitalists and so forth. Folks who are certainly for a while now have been eligible for the vaccine. Is there some clearinghouse where do we have a sense, um, Ms. Murphy, of the number or percentage of Winchester residents who have actually been vaccinated? Given that that is a, uh, that's an industry that's, um, had the opportunity for a while?
That is a good question that I don't have the answer to, honestly. Um, and I don't know that the, the state, uh, that I know of has published anything around that in terms of the town level. Um, so I can certainly ask it, sorry.
Yeah. And so, no, I mean, so it seems to me, the only vaccinations you know about are the ones that you all have been administering. Um, there's no way to know, just because you live in Winchester and you work at one of our many fine hospitals, you got the vaccine, that's not being recorded somewhere. But, um, given how strongly, uh, medicine is represented one way or another as an industry in Winchester among our residents. And, you know, for crying out loud, there's a hospital with Winchester's name in it two blocks from me. So, um, a lot of folks who live here work there as well. It seems to me we might be afforded some maybe larger protection that just comes with those folks having an early shot at the vaccine. I'd be really interested in knowing if there's a way to knit that together and get a sense of sort of percentage of those vaccinated among the adult community. Because that is one of the many, I, you know, issues in the back of my mind when we talk about return to school. I, I have no expectation that there will be an emergency use authorization for a vaccine for kids who are in kindergarten, first or second grade. I mean, right now I think it's sixteen and up. So that needle might move a little bit. We might learn before summer is here that that vaccine is now eligible, eligible for students as, you know, as young as sixth grade. Um, but our conversation around getting kids back to school at the elementary level means they're not vaccinated. And we talk about teachers and staff, but because kids can carry COVID and spread COVID, albeit, you know, lower viral load. So we understand at a lower rate, we still have adults in the household. And, um, I think there are legitimate concerns in the community about community spread sort of through that vector, if you will. So it just gives me some comfort i- i- if there was a way for us to understand either number-wise or percentage-wise, uh, who are the adults who've had the vaccine? Um, I don't know how you would go about getting that information, but I, I think it might be useful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I will ask.
Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Murphy, if you could stay with us for a little bit, um, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Evans, cause I know she had a number of things she was going to speak on. And certainly we will, we would love your, your feedback on any of those. Um, I know that, uh, I, I, I also am, in particular, interested in, I know, uh, Dr. Evans mentioned sort of the new guidance, the new, the new guidance from, uh, D E S I. But also I'm curious about the CDC guidance and how much of that has sort of slowed down to Mass Department of Public Health? Um, and how much is still sort of, uh, at the federal level, but not, you not yet adopted at the state level? So I don't know if those are, they're sort of general questions, but I don't know if there's anything you can say on either one of them.
Yes, so the CDC did publish, um, updated guidance around those who are vaccinated. And just to be clear, state of Massachusetts is right now still considering adoption of those recommendations. But as of right now, have not adopted them. So for example, a person who has been fully vaccinated, if they are exposed to a positive, um, case, the CDC has suggested that the, there's a change in quarantine, right, for that person? We have not changed our protocol for quarantine. So if there is an exposure, that person who is even fully vaccinated as of right now has to abide by the full quarantine protocol, uh, which entails staying at home until day five, testing, blah, 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 and on and on. Um, so, so no, the state of Massachusetts is currently considering adoption. The COVID Command Center is reviewing the recommendations that the State Department of Public Health has issued to them. So in other words, the governor has the final say. DPH has made their recommendations. It is now in the governor's hands to adopt or, or not, um, or tweak them as he sees fit. Um, and then we will hear about, uh, what is finally decided.
Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Evans, I don't know if you want to sort of, uh, I know you had a number of issues you were going to discuss and present on and, uh, move from there or not?
Um, I'd be happy to. So, um, touching briefly on the CDC recommendations, I think it's really important, um, for, um, uh, for us to avoid misinformation about the CDC recommendations, which are published, um, in detail on the CDC website. I've shared with you both a summary of those, a two-page summary and the full document. Um, one of the things that strikes me about the CDC recommendations, which also include some information about rates, uh, per hundred thousand residents in a community and kind of, uh, how that relates to whether schools should be open in hybrid form or more fully open or closed. Um, and it's, if you, uh, read that section of the report, it seems pretty clear that by the CDC guidelines, most of our schools should be closed. Um, because the rate of community, um, spread has, is, is quite high by their standards. Um, however, I think in Massachusetts, we all started out with, um, some metrics that would have had us closed many times. And we've been able to clear that through the other mitigation strategies that the CDC recommends in their report, which include, uh, masking, six-foot distancing, uh, cohorting, uh, cleaning and disinfection. All of the things that, uh, we originally had incorporated as part of our return to school plan. And, um, there are, uh, some other elements in there that, um, I think are really helpful to us that reinforce that, uh, we're able to keep schools open safely through our hybrid model. Um, and, and have limited in-school spread, although not zero. Um, and certainly I've heard lots of assertions by both the governor and the commissioner saying that students have low rates of infection and don't spread it to others easily. That is not necessarily the case and not our experience. But what I, what I would say is diligent contact tracing has been key to our ability to stay open. The lengths to which the contact tracers through the health department have been able to, um, track down quarantine contact, follow up with, um, uh, students and their families has really been extremely beneficial to us. And the cohorting, uh, of our students, uh, has often meant that students were not infectious well in school. And the contact tracing, um, has borne, uh, evidence that, that the tracing has worked well because we've, um, successfully identified those in-school contacts and quarantined them. And very few of them have actually become positive after that. And I think it's important to note that we have also. And I think it's important to note that we have also positive cases among our faculty and staff and that public health assists us with that, as do our nurses and our administrators. And we have many staff members who have been quarantined as close contacts outside of school, either through their own family members or through their, in their own towns, contacts with others through, through public health notification in those towns. And so it's not just the cases in town, but it is the cases and the quarantining of staff members that has an impact on our ability to deliver instruction and keep our schools open. So one of the things that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the CDC do not agree on is that the Commissioner and the Governor assert and, and local medical professionals assert it's perfectly safe to have students back at three feet. And while there are very few schools who are currently back in full at three feet with 20 or 25 students in a classroom, the data from other places is really mixed on that front, where some school districts, including a case I read today from the CDC, have shown considerable spread from teachers to students and vice versa when the distance is less than six feet. And so we need to be really cautious and have, have our data clear and our analysis clear about what the risk is. And there are cost benefits to every decision that we make. And one of the things that we've tried to really stay on top of is, what does the science say? What does the CDC say? What does the DESE say? What does the public health, at the state level say? What has been our own experience as we've really closely watched this? And it is extremely frustrating when there's conflicting advice coming from experts and conflicting advice coming from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Governor and the CDC. And so we have to rely on our own best judgment, because while there was a press conference today and an announcement by the Commissioner that he is now going to recommend to the Board of Education that they withdraw their approval for the hybrid model, that all, that the only learning time that will count will be in-school learning time, that all students should be in K-5 should be back in school in April. They have not given us a roadmap to get there or any additional guidance on how to do that safely, which is, again, extremely frustrating in a state where there are 300-plus school districts. Each school district and superintendent and school committee in public health in that town is forced to try to make the best decisions that are possible for students and families and staff members. And these are life and death decisions that have implications for not only immediate illness, but possibly continuing disability for some people who have COVID-related syndromes after they've, they've been infected. So we are cautious. We have been looking at this data. And one of the things I think that would be helpful for Jen Murphy to talk about is, how would the contact tracing shift if we suddenly had classes of 20 or 25, where students were three feet or less from the teacher all day in a classroom? And what do you think the impact might be on quarantining and our schools in general? And so I just wanted to throw that out to her to see if she had thought about that or had any opinions.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Murphy, if you have any thoughts on that, we would welcome them.
Well, what's interesting is, I think it was Secretary Paiser was interviewed this past weekend, and he said 15% of school districts have returned to full occupancy successfully. And yet, if you ask for any data around that, what, what that looks like, how would they define success? There is none. It is not published. It is not shared. I have asked DPH, I've asked D E S I myself. So I feel like that is a very big piece of information we need to know about, right? How, how, how did they define success? What does the data look like around those 15% that have returned full occupancy? Because I think they, we can't have an informed discussion without. But certainly, certainly it will be, you know, an extension of this great experiment for us. I can say, speak to a little bit of our data, the times that we had transmission that was most likely in school. There were, there was distancing violations that contributed to the spread, even with masks on. You know, less than six feet. Certainly, you know, I don't know the exact distance, but it was less than six feet for sure. And so I do think distance plays, plays a role in being protective. It's been proven. So, but that being said, though, if we did, if there were an impact, a negative impact, and we saw cases start to rise, obviously it would burden the system. It would burden our contact tracers. It would be more difficult to contain the spread in a timely way. It would be more interruptions for school days, because we would have to allow ourselves time to effectively contain spread. We would need more testing, so we're talking about more staff power to get kids tested and to try to control that. So I think there are a lot of implications. I'm not, I, I, I think I have concerns. I have concerns especially around a lunchtime period. You said D E S I didn't issue new guidance. You can't eat lunch without a mask, so, I mean, with a mask, so, so what would that look like? Are they suggesting that we maintain six-foot distance, and if so, it continues to be a logistical spacing issue within our school buildings? So, so without the guidance, without more data, I, I don't feel like I'd be, I don't feel like I'd be giving a very informed opinion at this point. Would I be willing to investigate it and go forward? Absolutely. We should research that further and have those discussions, because if, if they're saying that it can be done, it can be done safely, well then let's, let's pursue it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. Before we go back to you, Dr. Evans, Ms. Marshant has her hand raised.
Thank you. I'm going to take a minute to put the governor's mismanagement on blast here. Recently, I saw Dr. Wolinski on CNN, and she made it very clear that as long as schools had the mitigating efforts in place, that we could start to move into in-person, and she was very clear that that meant hybrid, not necessarily full in-person. The governor has not taken into account variances and the, the, the more viral and transmissible and deadliness of them. He has not considered how cohorting will be impacted, therefore raising rates in our, in our schools. He has not looked into our facility concerns. New York Times was just talking about the concern is not about student-to-student transmission as much as it is about the adults in the buildings transmitting the virus more than the kids. He has not prioritized our teachers for vaccinations, and as Jen Murphy just stated, how he is making the vaccination process even more muddled and ineffective. He is not, his, his department hasn't even followed through on the quarantine guidelines that have been changing. He has not considered our contact tracing protocols and how his, his now announcement of magically everyone needs to go back to school, how that will be impacted. He is being incredibly irresponsible, and this has life and death consequences. I don't understand how he can continue to talk about reopening schools when he has not even considered in the budget of compensating districts for all the students that are coming back. Everybody talks about, I believe the number was 30,000, Dr. Evans, please correct me if I'm wrong, of kids who pulled out last year, and especially in the K-1 age group. They're all coming back next year. He has not said that he is going to take those numbers into account rather than the new lower numbers. He has, today Senator Lewis was talking about how the state's tax receipts are not as negatively impacted as was expected, yet the governor still does not fully fund the pandemic impact on schools. This is so disgusting, because all it's doing, and this is a message to our parent community, especially the ones who are asking us to go full return in person. I feel it, I understand it, but it is so irresponsible of our governor and of the D E S I Commissioner to now pit our teachers who are struggling with mental health issues, where, being worn out, and all of the impacts of this pandemic, pitting them against our parents who are asking us to please bring back all of the students, given the impact on the students themselves. The irresponsibility is so deep, and if it is not stopped, it could cost lives. If nothing else, it could cost us in public education, our, our efforts in moving in the right direction. We have done, thanks to Dr. Evans and Jen Murphy and all of our staff, an incredible job putting together a hybrid model that works, a hybrid model that allows families to go remote if they need to. And this, this, this tactic of bullying from the state is absolutely unacceptable. I stand with our Public Health Department. I stand with our administration in saying, in saying that's enough. This is not a workable approach to public education. And our students are vulnerable to this, and our teachers are vulnerable. And so I, I just needed to make that statement for my conscience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshant. Appreciate it. Ms. Murphy, I have a question, unless you want to speak to anything that was just said. A question about, in practical terms, if tomorrow we had all of our students back at three-foot distance and one of our students came home and tested positive, what would that mean as far as practical situations, as far as contact tracing and as far as quarantining? You know, just to sort of walk us through what that would look like. You know, there's 18 kids in a class, they're not six feet apart, neither is the teacher, and one kid comes home that night and says, I don't feel so good, and then they get tested and they're positive. What would that look like as far as contact tracing and quarantining?
Right, so we're assuming the desks are at six feet, excuse me, three feet, yeah, three feet.
Yeah, I know it's hypothetical, and I, you probably hate hypotheticals, but people are asking us to, to, to look at scenarios, and I think this is a realistic scenario to understand.
Right, sure. So, so assuming though the, the protocol is to quarantine anyone within six feet of a child, of a student or staff member, you would have to automatically assume that any desk in that immediate range of six feet, those students would need to be quarantined, right? So that means they'll all be out of school following the protocol, you know, out for a minimum of five days if they test, they can test out, or they're out for 10 days with strict quarantine, non-testing. So, so right away, that's at minimum, never mind, you know, who else they've interacted with at lunch, in sports, you know, the usual what we're, what we're pursuing now. So it's an automatic, you know, radius out from that one desk automatically to, to follow up with that within the six-foot distance, so.
That's helpful, that's helpful, just helpful to understand. And as of right now, if desks are spaced six feet apart, that automatic radius, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but does not automatically result in a quarantining of people sitting six feet apart?
That's correct, that's correct. That's how we've avoided this, right? And we have, we have kept kids in school because of that exact spacing issue, and it's, and it's worked. It really has worked. And so, no, that would all, that would disappear, and it would be any, any student in that immediate vicinity of that positive child, any desk in that vicinity. So in front, on the sides, in the back, automatically those four kids, you know, if that's how the desks are situated, right, in rows, would be quarantined.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Bergstrom, I don't know who raised their hand first. I'll go with you, Ms. Bergstrom first.
Thanks, Brian. I have a question for Ms. Murphy and then one for Dr. Evans. Ms. Murphy, I'll start with you. I, I appreciate everything Ms. Marshant said, but I, I guess I'm looking to a time where it may no longer be our choice of whether we have to bring our kids back or not. So I'm trying to understand kind of what we value most around the parameters of the safety measures that we put in place. Because obviously, if we're going to bring all of our students back full-time, something is going to have to give somewhere. It's going to either have to be distancing or cohorting or whether our students stay for lunch. Sort of of those, of those things that we may have to make clips on, are there things that you think you value more than others from a public health perspective? Are there things that you can attribute our success to more than others? For example, you know, is distancing more important than cohorting? Is not being three feet away from each other at lunch? Like if we could have our elementary students go home for lunch, like ideally, like, and I know it might be an impossible question, but if you have any information or that you can use from your experience to weigh in on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so I, I do think that there are a couple of things. One is certainly unmasked lunchtime is a, is a top concern, especially if we're talking three feet. That, that just, in my mind, doesn't seem like it should happen at all, especially unmasked. You need greater distance if you're, I think everybody could agree with that, right? So, so there's a top consideration is unmasked lunchtime. Can it be done another way? Can kids eat at home rather than be in school and be less than six feet eating lunch? So that's something to, to think about. Certainly, the distancing in my mind, that I've seen are small subset of data that we can attribute to the transmission in school. Certainly, it was distancing that was very, that played a role in that transmission, even with a mask on, I might add. So the distancing in and of itself played a role, not just one time, in, in a couple times. So, and then, and then after that, certainly, you know, any unmasked time that you, coupled with the distancing, obviously is not a good idea. So I think, right, you know, right off the top of my head of thinking about our cases and thinking about our data, those would be top concerns for me.
Thank you.
Yeah. Especially if we're talking about a duration of time, you know, again, keep in mind, we're not, we're not talking about little bits of time, a minute here, a minute there. We're talking about, you know, if you're going to have a lunch period with, with kids, if you're going to have a classroom period with kids, so a sustained period of time, not just a minute here, a minute there.
Thank you. That's really helpful, because, you know, sometimes we do have to think about like the priorities, what's most important to sort of value to maintain in any mitigation strategies, and that's, that's really helpful. Dr. Evans, I, I just want to be clear on something for a minute, because I think that there was a lot of information that sort of hit the news today and came out from the state and a lot of reactions from folks on both sides. Frankly, every stakeholder group had some kind of reaction to what they heard today. And I just want to reflect for a moment on what we actually did hear, because there was a press conference where Commissioner Riley spoke, and he did speak this morning at a Board of Education meeting. But my understanding at this time was that this was not yet new guidance or a new mandate as of today, but it was sort of a heads-up from Commissioner Riley of what he may be proposing to the Board of Education in the coming weeks, and that the Board of Education would then have to vote on a plan that Commissioner Riley would put forward, and that that would not happen until a March meeting. And I also reflect back on last March, when there was a lot of changing sort of guidance coming out from the state. And I'd also like to reflect on what's sort of in our local control here as a school committee and what, what the Department of Education still can, can have control over for us. And I believe that that would relate mostly to, to our learning, student learning time, time on learning, because the Commissioner issued a waiver for that for districts at the beginning of the school year. And so could you sort of, I guess, opine on those issues for us? Let us know where we are and sort of like, everybody's sort of taken a deep breath yet, because we don't, I don't believe we exactly know exactly what's coming yet.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Cognizant of Ms. Murphy's time, so the, a lot of these things relate to student learning time, and I can talk about the impact of the three or four changes that actually have, have gone through the Board of Ed on this. Is there anything else for Ms. Murphy before we let her go? And then I can tackle that question. Um, is there anything else for Ms. Murphy before we let her go? Um, and then I can tackle that question.
So, so, um, Ms. Bergstrom, if you'd be willing to, um, hold that question. And, uh, we'll go to Mr. Nixon.
Um, I wasn't sure what, if, if Michelle had a follow-up question, um, um, so I guess I want to be mindful of my time here, given I'm, I'm interrupting Ms. Bergstrom.
Not at all. Your time is yours now.
Okay, so I, I, I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. I, I, I wanted to share some public thoughts similar to what Ms. Marshant did. We had some folks during public comment, I think referred to the, they, they were excited by the press conference today. I want to be clear, I was actually really frustrated and underwhelmed by the press conference. I was tuned in at two, at two o'clock sharp to see what I was going to learn because I was aware of the statements the commissioner made to D E C this morning. And what I was looking for were some details. And I feel like Jeff Riley wasted his trip to Boston because he got introduced, he read from a statement, and I think he came to the podium twice. It was about a forty-eight minute press conference. I, I'm just as disappointed at the Boston press corps because I felt what they really wanted to do is beat up on Governor Baker on the vaccine rollout. And he wanted to tell how we were in the, we're number, we're number one in our peer states. What is a peer state? Well, that's a state with our population or greater and there are twenty-four of them. I think I, that was said three or four times. The purpose of that press conference was for the commissioner to tell us more about the authority he plans to request of the board, which is just what Ms. Bergstrom was talking about. I'm alarmed when I hear that, you know, remote time will no longer be considered eligible and counting towards the, the total credit for the year. The one, and only the one piece I heard was an acknowledgement from the commissioner that they would entertain waivers. I don't really know what that means. I heard loudly that they want our younger learners in school five days a week. I did not hear them say that they're supposed to be in school five days a week until the bell rings at two thirty in the afternoon. So I, I appreciate that Ms. Murphy is here because in the summer and in the fall, she said very clearly, her three primary concerns from a public health point of view, and I think I get the order right, Ms. Murphy, it was open lunch. It was athletics and transportation, or maybe I have the last two backwards. My, I, I would like to know, so I'll, I'll put this question out there and come back to it in a moment. I, my sense is, I know we've had some incidences of, um, uh, of spread, yeah, uh, within sort of the athletics realm, but I, my sense is we've caught that pretty quickly. We've managed that, reacted to it. When teams need to go on quarantine, they do. My sense is the transportation piece has been working pretty well. My sense is the lunch has been working pretty well. But you know, we've got, I think, twelve-foot tables at Morocco. We put one kid at one end, one in the other and one in the middle. And so that's why it's working. So, uh, uh, in my mind, what I thought we would be talking about tonight is I was thinking about this frankly, just forty-eight hours ago before the announcement came today. And I've shared this with some of my, you know, parent peers in the community who are eager to know what's going to happen in the spring. Are, are kids going to come back? And I've said, well, we've talked about this. And the superintendent has acknowledged that if there's the opportunity to bring kids back, even in May or June, we would do that. We have to kind of see what happens, both in terms of how the infection remains under control and also with respect to vaccine availability and, um, and vaccination. So I was really looking forward tonight because I thought we might, you know, throw out different scenarios to the superintendent at a very high level and say, you know, once again, this, this was never supposed to be binary. This was never supposed to be a switch that was thrown. I think we've said that many times, that getting back to whatever the new normal is may take a series of steps. I was hopeful we might find a way to get our younger learners back in school five days a week. But that might be a day that stops at a lunch hour, maybe a slightly postponed lunch hour, kids go home for lunch. Then what? Do we do remote for specials, like for art, music, P E? Well, the good news is that's actually what's happening now. There's a model for that. Would that work? Based on the press conference today, I still have no idea because I don't know if a waiver for something like that would be considered. Um, the CDC guidelines that Dr. Evans was just mentioning in her opening remarks that she did share with the committee have a, a, they're dated February fourteenth, so they're a week old. CDC guidelines say wherever possible, maximum distance, but wherever possible, six feet is recommended. How can I square that with what I'm hearing today from the state? Well, possibly, if we might be allowed to look at a modified school day and kids are going home for lunch. That means perhaps we can repurpose cafeterias and music rooms and art rooms for instruction, maybe. But I don't know that that's really a solution because new physical spaces need new physical teachers. Where are the teachers going to come from? So there are so many operational impacts associated with this. Um, I, I also enjoyed Senator Lewis's meeting today that Ms. Marshant mentioned. Um, superintendent was able to join for part of that. So did Ms. Bergstrom. And what really came out very clearly to me was how frustrated so many area school committee members and superintendents were with this, um, surprise announcement. I, I wish it had simply been more of a, uh, an encouragement for districts to take this challenge on, which I feel like in, in my honest opinion, I feel like our administration has been working hard to try to find some solutions towards this. I know some parents may feel that's not the case, but I believe that to be the case. So I, I, I share Ms. Marshant's disappointment um, in sort of the sledgehammer method in which this was delivered today. I would just offer that uh, the relatively low rate of school day spread, I think is a direct relation to all the things that we're doing. I think Ms. Murphy just spoke to that very well. In my mind, that includes the distancing. I share her concern about open lunch, masks coming off, three feet separated. I think I heard the commissioner say in his remarks today, some districts' kids are two feet apart. I'd like to see that classroom. I was really having a hard time imagining that. Uh, shoulders must be rubbing in a situation like that. Ms. Murphy, I thought you hit it on the head when you said, you know, the secretary says there are fifteen percent of districts have returned safely. Show us the data. We like to think we're a data-driven community. I know that we are. The state should be as well, and I think we need to keep pushing for that. I, my last remark simply would be, um, I think it was a very detailed, thoughtful email the superintendent sent out earlier today. To the extent we have kind of a subgroup of our COVID planning team that's beginning to look at some options. Um, I, my hope and my expectation is that it includes Ms. Murphy or maybe her designee, because I realize she's busy. I think it should include at least one school committee member. If we can get Ms. Markham or, or, or nurse leader on board or some other, you know, district nursing staff that superintendent feels is appropriate, I think that would be helpful. And it may have already been presumed that those people would be participating. But I, I want to be really clear that I put more stake in what Ms. Murphy thinks and feels and says about public health in Winchester than I do the commissioner of D E C or the governor, neither of whom had the state's public health director standing with them today for what I'm told was a press conference. So I think, Ms. Murphy, you keep up the good work. You're doing a great job. I know it's a heavy lift for everybody. Um, I want to get kids back to school as soon as anybody else does, but I want to be thoughtful about it. And there, you know, I like to say crawl, walk, run. We got to do some walking before we do some running. And I hope that we can all be respectful of one another, um, as we try to figure out how to get there. Speech is complete. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. I will say that I quoted you the other day to somebody else when I said crawl, walk, run. I said, as Mr. Nixon, I might have even said, as Mr. Nixon would say, and then quoted you. So, um, uh, thank you. Uh, I, I, I do want to be mindful of Ms. Murphy's time. I know we have more on this topic, but I, I'm going to, uh, go to Ms. Bollniers. And then if, 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 if we're done with issues that, that we want to actually, um, shackle Ms. Murphy to her computer for the evening with, uh, we can then move on to, uh, other, uh, uh, less strictly health-related and, uh, operational. Um, so, uh, Ms. Bollniers.
I guess, thank you very much. I guess I had also had the question for Ms. Murphy or Dr. Evans um, about what things would look like if we were to come back at three feet distance. Um, I know you had just addressed elementary school situations. But if we were looking at the older students, if we were looking at middle school or high school, I guess is what I'm thinking of. I know that at the conference today, uh, the commissioner was talking about seeing six through twelve back by the end of the year as well. Um, but if we were to come back at three feet distance, then what would our contact tracing look like for a high school or, or middle school? I guess particularly high school.
Or, I don't know if you want to speak yet. Um, in, in general, um, if students were fully back five days a week at the high school, um, I tweeted recently a picture of one of our cohorts in a classroom and I counted fourteen students. And if anyone looked at that picture, those kids were, you know, the six foot apart is a little bit questionable. Um, many of our classrooms cannot fit a full room at three feet, particularly at the high school or the middle school, a full class of students. Certainly you can't fit. You, you couldn't have fit twenty-eight students in that class safely. Um, at, even at three feet, they would have been shoulder to shoulder as they are in a normal year where we have, you know, our classrooms are pretty packed. So students who had a regular course load who went from class to class, it would mean every time you had a positive case, you'd probably have thirty or more students quarantined as a result of that positive case and perhaps several teachers, depending where the students sat in class. And, um, you know, my, my main concern always has been primarily the health of everyone involved. But secondarily, just being able to keep operations going and, um, finding substitutes for staff members who are quarantined has been extraordinarily, uh, difficult, even at half um, usage of the schools with, with only half of the students there, or fewer than. Um, at, at the elementary level, we have twenty percent of our students who are full remote, smaller percent at the middle and high school. So, um, even with fewer students in a school, um, the impact when there's a positive case and one or two staff members are quarantined is significant. And if we have several teachers quarantined as a result of a single student or other teacher who's positive, other staff member who's positive, um, it really could mean that our schools are shut down frequently or classrooms are shut down frequently because they just don't have the staff to safely keep a building open. So, anything I forgot there, Jen, that you want to? Right. So it's, I would say it could be thirty to fifty people quarantined every time there's a positive case. Um, just, you know, depending on how many students are in their classes and how many people are around them and where they've been. So I would want to just say one thing about the lunches. The state said there's really no excuse for not spreading kids out through the whole school at lunch, have them sit in the hallway, have them sit in their classrooms. You can find a way to have everybody six feet apart at lunch. I would submit that the people who say those things have never actually run a school lunch. Um, because it takes a lot of supervision, especially at the elementary level. Uh, kids need their milks open. They need their yogurt containers, you know, cover off. They, they need adults supervising them. And you can't, unlike the high school where we can spread kids out more easily and send some off, you know, juniors and seniors off to eat off campus. You can't spread, uh, you know, seventy-five, uh, first graders out over a great distance without a lot of adults to supervise them. It's another supervision issue for us and it's a cleaning issue. Um, kids eating lunch all over the building require a lot of cleanup and our custodians and our contract cleaners are busy doing all of the, um, disinfection and the regular cleanup of, um, frequently touched surfaces. They're just all over the building all the time, cleaning, cleaning, cleaning. If we spread lunch out beyond the spaces where we're currently doing lunch, I have concerns about our capacity to manage that well. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. Not to mention, you know, concern with rodents and other things if you have lunch. You know, remnants everywhere all over your building. So.
Don't say that in front of the health director. We don't want to get closed down.
So, I mean, and I, and I know we want to let Jen go, it's after eight, but what I would say is, um, the, the Health Department, and I'm, I'm pleased to see the praise for the Health Department because, uh, you know, Jen has, has sent Jessica Pfefferman, Pfefferman to us to help out with this, um, pool testing. Um, they've been extraordinarily cooperative and direct and transparent. And it's been a wonderful collaborative relationship. Um, we're going to face a lot of challenges in the next few months as we transition more students back and, um, it may require more support from the town in terms of hiring more contact tracers or other support personnel. So we'd like to make sure that we are aware of the impact on the town and the Health Department and D P W of every decision we make as well.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, I would like to continue on this discussion, but I would like to, um, if we can, allow Ms. Murphy to have her dinner and go back to the rest of her evening. Um, and knowing that she will obviously have, answer any questions we have even later on. Um, so Ms. Murphy, unless you have any final thoughts, I, I would, you're certainly welcome to stay, but I do want to give you your freedom.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for having me and, and thanks for your kind words. Thank you.
Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Evans, um, I know you had a couple, a, a number of other things. Again, they're more operational, um, that, and I was hoping that you could, um, continue on. Cause I, I believe there are a couple of issues that were at pool testing and, uh, sports and things that you were going to mention to us.
So let me go back to the, um, question that Michelle Bergstrom asked about, um, the process for compelling schools to move back, um, full and in person, all day, five days a week. Which grade levels? How soon is it going to happen? So the, um, unlike Winchester, we started right out of the gate with a hybrid model and had kids in school every day and have had kids in school every day uh, since the beginning of the school year. Um, some districts have really struggled with the process of bringing students into school. They've had H V A C concerns. They've had staffing concerns, et cetera. And so they've had very high rates of transmission in their communities. They've had a number of issues that have resulted in them using a full remote approach. The commissioner and the Board of Education have been very concerned about this and concerned about the impact of students who were disengaged from school and were experiencing mental health challenges. So some months ago, the Board of Education, with very little public notice and not much discussion, uh, implemented changes to student learning time that required school districts to provide a certain number of hours of instruction via direct teacher contact. And either, that could either be in person or, um, uh, via technology. Um, but, uh, but did not include asynchronous learning in that. Um, and so twice now, districts have had to submit detailed, um, average student schedules for several grade levels to show that we are in compliance with the minimum number of hours of student learning time. The unintended consequence of this is that, um, for districts like ours, it actually put more restrictions on our flexibility in bringing students back. For example, we were fairly close to bringing students back for some Wednesday morning, um, experiences, but because students are taught as a whole class on Wednesday mornings, to have some students come back on Wednesday mornings would mean the other students would have to learn asynchronously and not have teachers working with them, which would reduce on average the, uh, number of hours of instruction, direct instruction by three hours for every two weeks for, for students. Which would have meant we would have been out of compliance. And so restrictions like that have unintended consequences. It would be much easier for us to meet the student learning time regulations if we placed a whole class in front of computers and had teachers teach them remotely than it is to have our combination of hybrid and full remote uh, instruction as we, that we so highly value. So why had we not moved ahead with more, uh, Wednesday plans? It's because then we would be out of compliance with the student learning time, uh, regulations passed by the Board of Education. So unexpectedly today, we are, I have been well aware that the commissioner wants more students back in school in person. I want more students back in school in person. I deeply want that. But I feel a responsibility to make sure we do it safely. And, and every district has different challenges. Um, and it's very heartbreaking for us to get emails saying, I heard of a district on the South Shore that's brought students back for more time. Why can't we do it? We're Winchester. And when I investigate, I often find that that other district has many more empty classrooms, has additional staff, has additional resources. And in fact, doesn't have a full classroom of twenty-two students, but has broken that into two groups of students with two teachers or an aide watching a group of students in a different room. And so they may be back in person, but they're not in back with their own teacher often. And so, or they may be blessed with very small class sizes to begin with, and they can welcome or get one back. They might have larger classes, classrooms. Every district has different strengths and challenges when it comes to meeting this, this complex, um, problem. And so the commissioner's announcement today is that he is going to ask the Board of Education to rescind their approval of the instructional hours that they, the minimum number of instructional hours that they were expecting districts to provide every two weeks, to do away with that and go back to the original student learning time regulations, which before COVID were nine hundred hours for elementary and nine hundred and ninety hours of instruction for secondary. Not including lunches and study halls and passing time and those sorts of things. So we've worked hard to increase instructional time in the districts lately, you know, making a longer elementary day. Looking at school start time, making sure that our students had enough instructional time. And so if the board of ed accepts the recommendation of the commissioner to rescind the. One year of S L T student learning time regulations that they recently passed. He's trying to use that as a, an incentive for districts to fully comply. With having students back all day, four or five days. Short of that, if the board of ed passes that, short of that, the districts will have to submit a waiver, which the D E S C may or may not. Approve. What is not clear to me is what happens to districts who are out of compliance for the remainder of this year. If we are not able to meet that and we're not granted a waiver, what happens? And so. Superintendents were not given any heads up that this announcement was going to come today, which is obviously very distressing for us because we then can't be prepared to answer questions about it. And, and I think really it's, it's better to use a carrot than a stick in order to, to. Get districts to where they want to be instead of working in partnerships with us. It would have been more helpful for the governor or the commissioner to say to districts, what do you need? To open more fully in person? What additional resources, staffing or support do you need? Instead of asserting that the medical professionals say you can safely be three feet apart and there's not going to be any school spread. When we know that's not the case because we've had school spread. And asserting that there's been no school spread, when I know there's been school spread. It feels disingenuous and not, not honest to me. And so. So we are concerned that the board of ed is going to accept this recommendation. And then they're going to compel us to move very quickly in a less safe manner to bringing students back. So my recommendation in response, which I had already prepared before the commissioner made his. Remarks today, the board of education was to take the plans that our elementary principals and central office members have been working on. Which include lots of different alternatives for bringing students back. Either by grade level or for some portion of the week or on Wednesdays. Or for four days or for five days. Every option has a variety of challenges associated with it that made me not move forward with them. Particularly in the last couple of months. Where our spread in the community was quite high and our numbers were very concerning in our schools. And, and so. It was always our intent to keep revisiting this to see whether we have more options. And we were waiting for additional guidance from the CDC, which was planned and then delivered. We were waiting for more guidance from the D E S C, which was not delivered except for transportation. We were waiting for more information about vaccination. Because the one thing I think that many people miss about vaccination is. If the public health folks will say that a vaccinated adult does not need to quarantine as a result of exposure to a student. We can keep schools open because we can keep our schools staffed. Even if there are a large number of students who have to miss because they've been quarantined. It will at least allow me to have predictable staffing levels once our staff members have been vaccinated. It'll also give me more flexibility to bring back the very large number of staff members. Who have medical exemptions that require them to work fully remotely. It'll give me more options for flexible approaches to staffing and personnel because once vaccinated. Those individuals will be able to be brought back into schools and will give us more capacity to manage the district. And so we were. Not just waiting to make recommendations to the school committee for, to bring students back, but we're waiting for important information, which. Has been disappointing in terms of vaccination and has been not forthcoming from the D E S C. And so in the absence of that, we're going to take a sub. Working group from our twenty five member COVID planning and implementation team, which has broad representation of teachers. Teachers union of folks, health professionals, parents, administrators, et cetera. And really dig deep into the work that's already been done, hundreds of hours of work have already been done. We just need to narrow the options to be sure we've thought of everything. And then meet several times over the course of the next two weeks and then on the sixteenth, bring some recommendations to you as a school committee to consider. So that we can. Move ahead with a plan regardless of whether the state mandates it or not. That makes sense for Winchester to bring more students back in person. So that's where we are with that. It's, it's a K five effort at the, at the moment. We will still consider six to twelve options, but I'm going to wait a week or two to get that group started. Until we've made some more determination about K five. So. The only other issues I wanted to talk about in terms of COVID updates would be pool testing and athletics briefly. So I'll stop there before I talk about pool testing and take any feedback that you have on. Our plan for bringing together this working group for K five students.
Ms. Bergstrom.
I just wanted to follow up Dr. Evans and be really clear too, because I think that what you said is really important and. You know, I share Mr. Nixon and Ms. Marchand's frustration with sort of blanket statements. Lack of support and follow through and also lack of funding, frankly, you know. The chapter seventy that's coming in through, from the state this year. Is not fully funding the Student Opportunity Act that we expected more money from as well. So I'm frustrated on many of the funding fronts as well for making these plans happen. But to return to student learning time just for a moment. I, I also want to be really clear that right now the state has. Has said how many hours of student learning time synchronously we need. And that there may be a change to that somewhere between what we have now and the nine hundred hours that would typically happen in a normal school year. But that the state can't dictate at the local level. How we implement the number of hours that are required. So even pre pandemic, there are districts that may have only gone to school four and a half days per week. Because they had long Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays and a half days on Wednesday. To allow time during the school week for professional development time. And, and time for teachers to collaborate. So I, I want to be mindful of the fact that even if the state does change our. Student learning time, that doesn't necessarily dictate a five day, eight to, eight to two twenty at elementary. School day that we might, that we expect to see this fall. But at this time, how we use the learning time we're required to. To fill through synchronous learning is still the decision of, of the Winchester School Committee based on the recommendations. Of the educators and the teams that we put together. Is that an accurate representation?
Within the parameters of the labor contracts.
As well.
The restriction, the restriction would be, you know, the, the length of the school day is dictated is. And the day's work is, is contained in each of our four labor contracts. And so within those restrictions, yes, I, we, we have some flexibility. But I think that the commissioner was really clear, his expectation is five, five full days a week. And so that's, that's the way he's crafting his recommendation to the board of ed. And so. We want to be back five full, full days as well. It's just a question of what will be the likely outcome if we try to do it and, and. If it doesn't work well and the, and it leads to significant community spread or school shutdown. How can we turn back? Once we've changed our schedule, once we've reassigned staff, et cetera. It, it really is a difficult thing. So we want to proceed. Quickly to make the recommendations, but be very thoughtful about the implementation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom's, Ms. Bergstrom, excuse me. Additional questions on, on this one topic before Dr. Evans moves on to the other COVID nineteen district updates? Ms. Marchand and then Ms. Boloniers afterwards.
I just want, Dr. Evans, I may have missed it and I'm sorry about that, but. We were called out repeatedly, whether it was in emails or, or public comment about. Why is this something that we've been promising and all of a sudden now we're gonna do it? And, and I want to highlight and have you because you'll be able to better explain it. Bring like. Discuss how it also was because of the changing science, changing funding streams and all of that, that it wasn't anything you sat back and said. Oh, I'm going to hold kids out of school just because, but rather the circumstances as they develop, as the science changes. As the vaccines are being rolled out are impacting the dialogue moving forward, if that makes sense.
Right. And you know, and I think. Ms. Hoffman quoted some emails or some updates I've given to the community. All of those are accurate and I stand by all of them. We have been working on plans. We had hopes to bring students back. We had hopes that all the teachers will be vaccinated by now. And that would have made a huge difference in terms of predictability of staffing, might have made a difference in terms of collective bargaining. There are lots of complexities in this situation that are unknowns. And promised guidance from the D E S C was not forthcoming. Beyond anecdotal information that doesn't necessarily help us a lot. We continue to work with other districts and, and learn from them and work together, meeting with the middle six league superintendents on Friday. And we will, we have as an agenda item, return to school, what are you doing? What have you learned? What has been your experience? We meet regularly. I know Jen Ellenema. Meets with the assistant superintendent, Lori Kirby meets with the HR group, and Whitmore meets with the business managers. Return to school has been a discussion for all of us for, since we started back this year. And so. Because we're operating without a lot of accurate information, it makes us. Rely more heavily on our own public health folks and our own experience rather than. The dictates of people who, who frankly are not in schools every day. They weren't in the middle school today like I was to see what it's like to be in a middle school classroom. Under pandemic conditions. They've never stood in front of students for six or seven hours straight with a mask on and watched them all so that their mask didn't slip from their nose. And they've never tried to keep five year olds from each other. Safe all day, moving them around the building with six feet distance in between. It's incredibly stressful. I saw remote teachers today. I saw the remote course teacher today in the middle school doing stretching exercises in front of her students. Teachers have found incredibly creative ways to engage students and we're doing the very best that we can. We wish it were more normal operations. We were trained for that. We have a lot of experience with that. We're looking for the silver linings and trying to. Keep the things that are working well that we've learned through this pandemic, but in general. I understand, I was a single mother for many, many years. My kids were seven to seven kids, you know, before school care, after school care. And many, many families are struggling to have their children home. It's an incredible financial hardship to pay someone for childcare. It's a learning, a lost learning opportunity for some students who would do better in school. But in general, the students I'm seeing are doing very well and learning a lot and. If we could have done this easily, if we could have been back safely. For five full days a week, we would have done it from the start. There's a reason why we are hybrid. And so, and so that's, you know, that's kind of where we've landed.
Thank you for that. And, and let's not forget that we could also map out Dr. Fauci whom I'm, I am an admirer of. We can map out all of his statements and dates and stuff and, and. See exactly where the confusion goes all the way up to. So I really hope that people have mercy on. Our staff and our teachers because you deserve more than that.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. Ms. Boloniers.
Thank you. I was just wondering, Dr. Evans, if you could give some idea. Or heads up either now, today, or when we hear back about the possible scenarios that. And that you're going to be, that you and the team are going to be considering. About possible outcomes that may happen. From each of the different options. I know that back in August. Or back at the end of summer last year, you had released, you had put together some FAQs and released them to the community. About different scenarios that could happen such a, or I think maybe talking about. If students, that some, that if we were to return, then some students might not end up with the same teacher, there could be that possibility. Might, could end up at a different school for part of the school year. And I think if those are some of the outcomes that could possibly happen or as you were just. Discussing a few minutes ago about the Wednesday schedule. And if we were to. Bring more children back in, or in person on the Wednesday, then the possible outcome could be that. We'd be going every, they would be going every other week potentially. And there's an, an impact on the overall amount of student learning time. So I guess I just feel it's important to understand these kinds of the give and take of each of these. Of each of some, of each of these options. And for our community to understand that. What the, what the possible consequences could be. I don't think every. Whatever we decide, I don't believe that everybody can be happy and I think we just need to understand and our community needs to understand that. We may make some choices and there will be some things that people will be unhappy about. But to be able to move forward, we're going to have to. Accept that.
A hundred percent. So the. Preliminary planning that we've done with the elementary principals involved, I think fourteen different choices. Each of which had its own challenges and consequences. I think that's too many, so we're going to pull back on that a bit, but we're going to, in the working group, look at each of the choices. And make sure that there isn't any other choice we haven't thought of. The, you're right in that any decision that we make. Is going to leave some people feeling unhappy and uneasy. I've had emails today that say. I will never send my child back at less than six feet. And so you better have a remote classroom for that child because that child is going to be withdrawn. I have other people saying, if you don't come back for five full days. You know, you better be prepared to face dire consequences because I'm very upset. And so it's a, you get the full spectrum of people who are incredibly frustrated. And then you have a lot of people who are fearful. I have people writing to me saying, I won't send my child back if you mix cohorts. I won't send my child back if you, you don't do a deep cleaning and disinfecting in between cohorts. And so whatever, I'm fully prepared for this and, and I know that this happens and this is what school committees have to. Take on when they make hard choices is any decision we make, we're going to have a lot of unhappy people. A few happy people, whatever decision we make, but we'll have a lot of unhappy people. We're trying to mitigate, you know, those consequences in our choices, but luckily we've thought through a lot of the implications. Some will require significant schedule changes or personnel shifts. Some might, may require students to shift teachers or schools or classrooms. Some may put us out of compliance with student learning time. Some will have an impact on school lunch. In terms of how much we need to subsidize our school lunch program, et cetera. Some may have. Transportation consequences and additional transportation costs. So there are a lot of moving parts and that's what the working group will tackle. To be sure that we follow each pathway and consider all the sort of pieces. Fortunately, a lot of the work has been done already. At some point, we will send a survey out to the parent community to see what their thoughts are. But it's not going to be a menu of options in the, in the greatest number of votes gets. You know, that option chosen. It has to be feedback on each option and then we have to make the best decision possible. As a working group, recommendation to the school committee and a school committee decision about what's the best choice for most of the students in Winchester. And I never like to put out surveys that have options that we may not be able to support or that. We haven't thought through all the consequences or explained them because without information. Inevitably, when I send out those surveys, I get lots of emails. Well, what if X, Y, Z? What if this happens? How can I answer this question? And so people are right, they want to have informed. And so people are right. They want to have informed consent when they give us their opinion. And so, um, we will have feedback as part of this process. But, uh, again, there will be significant numbers of, of families who will not want to shift at all and are happy with the current model. And so we've got, um, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We've got a lot of work behind us that we've already put in. Uh, and we'll do our best to be direct and transparent, as I have tried to be every step of the way since the start of last March. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bergstrom, is your hand, was it from before? Is it raised still? Okay.
Just a quick question. Uh, Dr. Evans, we've talked a lot about in-person models. Um, are we committed to also maintaining the remote model for families that want to choose and and or need it through the end of the school year?
I think ethically, we send to families, once you make a remote choice, we're going to hold you to that. And we have to hold up our end of the bargain and keep the remote program in place till the end of the year. There are some families who have, uh, concerns about their own family's, um, health and need to keep students home for that reason. So whatever scenario we put forward has to keep a full remote option. Large numbers of full remote families decide to come back in person, it could have an impact on the class size of the remaining students. And it could have a staffing implication if we have to move some. We may have to combine some classes and shift teachers around if we need to have more in-person teachers as a result of a return to five days. So you can see that this is a very complicated, with five elementary schools and, you know, two thousand elementary students and several hundred staff members. It's a complicated algorithm to make all of the numbers work. And we have to operate under the constraints of the collective bargaining agreements for our four union, union groups. So all of it is complex and it's not as though we can make a decision in three days and then implement it. It really does take a little lead time.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are you ready to move on to fall sports and, uh, fall, quote, fall sports? And, uh, if you, if you want to, I mean, I did, I don't see any additional questions on, on, on that topic.
Sure. So the only other topics I have are pool testing and, um, the fall two league sports, just sort of this extra fall season where we have several sports. I've given you a summary. The Middle Six superintendents are meeting Friday to look at a couple of minor modifications that the A Ds have recommended. Um, but the, technically, the season started yesterday. And so we're hopeful that students will stay healthy. We did have some positive cases on some teams in the last season. Um, and some, uh, teams had to shut down for a few days for quarantining purposes. It's not clear to me that the transmission was the result of the team's sports, rather gatherings were the suspected culprit, um, because kids on teams tend to gather. Uh, and so that was disappointing to me to see positive cases. They were, it was, uh, football and hockey were the two, um, where there were positive cases. So what we've said is if we start to see a significant impact, then we will shut down this, the team. Um, and fortunately, most of the teams were able to get in their full seasons and reschedule games and, and have a great experience. So if you have specific questions, I will collect them, um, and then I'll report back to you at next Tuesday's meeting because there may be some small modifications as a result of the meeting on Friday with the Middle Six superintendents.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, just a quick point of clarification. You said football and hockey. It wasn't football.
Basketball, basketball and hockey were the two sports where there were positive cases that had to shut down.
Thank you.
For a short time. Sorry, football is about.
Coming up. Yeah, in the fall, in the fall. In the fall.
February fall.
Mr. Nixon.
Can't wait for my leaves to turn in a week. Yeah, so I, I, I was looking to make that clarification and also, uh, again, not to sort of, well, not to single folks out, but we may not have had spread based on athletic competition, but i- is it not fair to say, Dr. Evans, that these were still team-based gatherings where we had some incidences of spread? Is that not a factor? And if so, that's still something we can continue to work to manage and mitigate, right? So that's, you know, communication through team captains, you know, parents of athletes, the coach and Mr. Aria.
Absolutely. We'll continue to do that. I actually think the genesis of most of the cases were senior, um, parties rather than teams and then senior players. Then gathering with people on the team passing them on. So the original, the original couple, you know, we had a cluster at the high school pretty, I was pretty direct about that. The result of, uh, one large unmasked ill-advised gathering and one smaller, um, gathering, it's unmasked. And so, um, it's a lesson to us how easily this virus spreads on one night, one night, one ill-advised night of, of a bad choice. And I think we had twenty-five students infected. And so that's, you know, that's who attended that event. So that, you know, that's, that's a lesson to us that school spread can and will happen if people are close and unmasked. And so we just have to be careful.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Seeing no additional questions on that, I don't know if you want to move on to the pooled testing. Um, and I, I'm just note that Dr. Evans said if you have any questions, we could, you could get back to about sports.
So the pool testing, so the states, um, matched us up with, the state has matched us up with Beacon. Um, and, um, our team of Jess Befferman, uh, Dennis Mahoney, Jen Murphy, uh, and Jen Markham, our nurse leader, have been meeting regularly and work through the vacation, uh, to implement all of the many steps associated with, with starting up pooled testing. We decided to start at the high school because it is our largest school and has the uh, greatest movement, um, and mixing of students, uh, as they move from class to class, even though there are two cohorts. And thought that it would be helpful to do it just at one site. We also have the nurse leader there, um, and that's helpful as well. What we've learned is that, um, that was a wise decision, uh, because the districts who have tried to do it in multiple schools are really struggling with the logistics. It is, um, I'm going to be clear, an immense amount of work. It's not as easy as it sounds. There are a lot of steps. And, uh, they culminated in a letter that went home today that says we're going to start testing seniors next week and then we'll add teachers and juniors the following week. One of the concerns we have is making sure that our pools that include teachers are very small number of teachers in those pools so that we don't have to quarantine a whole bunch of teachers while everybody comes back to get retested. It is a voluntary pilot. We don't know how many students and teachers will eventually, uh, agree to participate. Um, there have been some significant costs to the district and to public health to pay the, um, cord, to pay Jessica, to coordinate this. She's made a website for the project. She's helped us develop the letter to the home. She's, she's, she's been the liaison with Beacon. Beacon is identifying a project manager to come out and help, um, train and get folks set up. We also need to rely on parent volunteers because you have to have observers for the swabs. Which I have some, we, we have great parent volunteers at the high school through the P F A, but I have reservations about relying on volunteers. And there may be, this is one of those cases where better resourced districts may have additional staff members to implement pool testing, or they may just have many fewer students. I mean, our high school is bigger than a lot of the districts who've implemented this, so, um, we have a large number of students. And, um, and we're going to roll it out gradually and, and we will learn from that. And I'll report back to you after about four weeks. We're hoping the state will fund a full six weeks into the middle of March. Um, and then we'll learn some lessons. We'll be able to do some cost estimates because once we don't have the support of public health and Beacon, we'll have to budget for additional personnel to run the program. And then scaling it up to add six additional sites, um, is a little daunting. And so, uh, we will try to look at what the costs and benefits are and make a recommendation to you. But the, um, town will have to see whether, um, they'll be able to provide any funding for this once the pilot happens. So I have shared with you, um, the letter that, uh, was sent home to parents today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the effort. I can't say enough about the team at the high school who's worked many, many hours to set this up and ensure that it's going to work well. And, um, I'm really grateful to them for taking this on in addition to everything else they're working on at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, Mr. Nixon.
Uh, thank you. So I, I guess a quick question, following up on a comment that our, uh, that Ms. Andrews made during student report tonight. She was, you know, recently made aware of pool testing. She'd received an email. Sounds like it was hot off the press for her. Can you take a moment, Dr. Evans, just to describe, um, and I apologize if this has been presented and I missed it? How, how are we communicating to high school students and parents, um, through what means, how frequently, how are we getting the message across?
Sure. So an initial letter went today with some links, uh, to additional resources, uh, and and there's a website that will become live as well that has a lot of, uh, information for people who might be interested in participating. Uh, the target audience really for the first week is seniors, um, because they're the ones who'll be asked to come. We're going to collect the samples before school, um, in the gymnasium. That's already set up, you know, with individual desks for students to eat there. Um, and we're going to try that first, see how that goes, see how many stations we have, see how long it takes to collect the samples. The logistics of following through, our main concern is if we have positive pools, bringing those folks in the pool back. And the requirement now that's changed on the state level is they have to have the binax rapid test, but they also have to collect an individual sample to send for a P C R test at the same time. Because they're concerned that a positive pool means someone is, uh, ill and could be infectious. And we want to be sure we, um, identify who that person is. It was the recommendation of the state that you kind of shrug your shoulders and say, if you can't identify who it is, it was probably someone at the tail end of an illness and they're not infectious anymore. But we weren't comfortable with that and I think the state heard that and then they changed the protocol. So there's a lot of follow-up that will have to be done if there's a positive pool. If we're lucky and we don't have any positive pools, then we just move on and we test again the next week. And we add another, you know, four hundred people to the, to the tests. And then the next week we have another four hundred until we were testing the whole fourteen, fifty-plus staff. As many as volunteer to do it. It is a voluntary process. No one is required to do it. We are encouraging it because we want to have a good idea. And I'm hopeful that we'll get seventy to eighty percent participation, which will give us a good idea of the usefulness of this. If we have very limited or sketchy or inconsistent participation, then it'll be difficult for us to justify spending large amounts of money to continue with pool testing. Particularly if the town is now offering weekly testing, um, where folks can go and get tested as well. So, uh, we'll see where we are. I was, uh, a grateful skeptic to hear that this was going to be, um, uh, available to us. And it has been quite costly to start up, I have to say, in terms of time, energy, purchasing additional things. We had to purchase hand scanners and, you know, it's just, there are a lot of hidden, it's like anything else we try to do. There are a lot of sort of, read the fine print.
And can you clarify, Dr. Evans? I know when we, when, when we were talking about this opportunity and ultimately agreed to go forward with it, one of the concerns we had was the prospect of bringing back students who had tested positive in pool testing. We talked about scenarios like maybe using, you know, for instance, the school committee room at Parkhurst. We'd never, we never use it, um, but you'd have to have it staffed, uh, you know, you'd, people have to know when to get there. Because we did have that concern, you'd be bringing in someone who's potentially positive back into the school. So, um, and I apologize if I missed it. Is the plan to bring them back in for binax now at the high school? Or would that be offsite somewhere?
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a location with an outside app access door, um, that's going to be used for the retest. Um, and they'll all be scheduled at the same time. So people won't come into the regular building. They'll just, they'll be given instructions on where to go. And they'll do both the rapid test and the, and the more invasive kind of test, um, right away. Um, this is, and it's, it took a lot of planning and kind of coordination of where to do it, who's going to do it. It's a process we'll have to repeat six times at each elementary and at the middle school if we go forward with, um, pool testing there. I share your concern. I share your concern about the members of the, a, a positive pool. And the districts, you know, districts like Watertown, um, I think they said in the first few months, they had nineteen or twenty positive pools. Um, when they were doing your testing, obviously they have fewer students. Um, and I don't know how many were participating, what percentage were participating, seventy or eighty percent. So, um, if the local community rate is low and the in-school rate is low, we may not have any positive pools. We may have one and it may not be a big issue, but it is certainly a concern. But I, I think the team has identified a safe way to do the follow-up testing at the high school in a location that is secure, where students don't have to interact with students or faculty members who are in a positive pool, don't have to inter- interact with other people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Evans, you talked a little bit about, um, the hidden costs associated with this. And I sort of have a two-part question. Uh, do you have any capacity to define those additional costs for us? And let us know, um, what budget lines those are coming out of right now? Do we still have COVID nineteen funds from the state or federal government that's helping us to cover those in the short term? And how you would anticipate if we needed to continue pool testing, particularly if we're going to try to bring more students back? How we would cover those costs and would there be any grant funding available in the future? And also, um, along with many of the other, um, claims I've heard out of Desi and the state that they are providing pooled testing to districts. I, I believe that that's only till the end of March. So, um, have you heard any additional information or anticipate any additional information of the state itself continuing to cover any of these costs? Or do you still anticipate this is on Winchester starting April first?
So it may extend to two more weeks into April because we're starting a little bit later. So they said they'd give us a full six weeks. So, so what, what are they giving us? They're giving us the test kits themselves and the processing of the test. And, um, the payment for the FedEx to send the test out to be processed. Uh, they're giving us some support from Beacon in the form of a project support person. Um, but what they're not supporting is the, some of the technology, the scanners, the printers. They're not, um, covering the cost of, uh, Jessica Befferman, who is funded by the public health department in our town, from the town budget. And, and once the pilot is over, we have to negotiate ourselves with the vendor to see what they'll charge us per test, per pool. Because there's no guarantee that that cost that the state is paying is going to stay the same. We have to get our own contract individual, every, this is another great part of being in Massachusetts. Every district is going to have to negotiate their own contract with the vendor for the pool testing. So, uh, we have no source of funding in the school department budget. And, you know, the scanners, um, uh, Jen Ellenma said she would order them from Amazon with her credit card in order to get them and get reimbursed. And so Ellen will identify a source of funding. There are some funds available in some of the COVID-related grants, but certainly not enough to do seven schools. It's, it's not even enough to continue the high school, really. There's not. We haven't put aside funding for pooled testing. There may be additional federal monies that come. If we get an additional grant of half a million dollars, is that what we want to spend it on is the question. And I, and I've spoken with, um, Jessica, um, Befferman about this issue. How will we determine whether this was successful? Uh, what will be the, uh, decision matrix around continuing or expanding it to seven schools? What are the benefits? What are the costs? Um, and so we're learning a lot about that. Any implementation that relies on a lot of volunteers is always difficult. Someone has to manage the volunteers. Someone has to sign them up. Someone has to supervise that they come. So there are a lot of sort of pieces of this that we can quantify the cost. But certainly, um, you know, my economics professors told me there's no such thing as a free lunch. There's no such thing as free pool testing. Or it's somewhat subsidized, but it's still extremely costly. And in the end, it will be very costly to implement once, um, once the state stops subsidizing it.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, Ms. Marshant.
Very briefly, I could solve this problem for the state if they would just put resources into vaccinating our staff. And so I encourage our parent community, if anyone's listening. I would appreciate a letter-writing campaign, flood the governor and let him know that in order to save our districts, this, this our districts, this, which I didn't agree with in the beginning, this pool testing, in order to save our resources and be more effective in reopening schools, vaccinate our teachers, vaccinate our staff. That's the most cost-effective way to reopen our schools and to not have to deal with pool testing and its complexities.
Thank you, Ms. Marshon. Mr. Nixon.
I would just observe that the state that's now saying districts each have to negotiate their own contracts with the testing companies is the same state that bullied districts into group negotiated settlements with yellow bus companies. So just dwell on the irony for that for a moment. But I have a question for maybe as much for the chair as for the superintendent, given there was a significant reserve fund transfer. Is there an understanding with Enzo and the other members of the Finance Committee about the allocation of those funds that goes towards testing costs? As Dr. Evans mentioned, we have some staff members in the Board of Health. Can somebody just sort of help us understand how we're accounting for those costs? To what are we attributing those costs? And what expectation is there for some discussion about allocating reserve fund transfers to cover some of that? Which I presume that's a discussion that is going to happen.
Mr. Nixon, I would just say that I don't know if Dr. Evans is ready to talk about the cost of what we've been incurring. It should be something we'll talk about. But right now, she's still trying to get things up and running. As far as reserve fund transfer, that money was recommended be put into the reserve fund at the request of the Select Board and voted by town meetings, so that it could potentially be available for issues like testing in our schools, testing in our community. That said, once the money is in the reserve fund, it is under the control of the Finance Committee. I have every reason to believe that they would expend that money for such an expense, but it would be us going to them and requesting a reserve fund transfer. So I don't have an answer because we don't have a cost. And the way the Finance Committee works is very few things are just open-ended. Sure, we got the money, you can have it. It'll be, how much is it going to cost? What is it going to cover? And until we can sort of have that question, I'm not sure I have a good answer, nor are they likely to give me a good answer.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Ms. Bollinger.
Thank you very much. Dr. Evans, I know that the registration has just started. But I was wondering if you've heard any indication of how it is going so far?
So we had a few people try it out for ease of registration, and they found it quite easy. So that was good. It took a lot of upfront work on our part to get that ready to roll. I'll have a better sense next Tuesday about how many students. It's only students the first week, just to sort of get the ball rolling. And only in seniors, I think. If for some reason, and we're doing it on two days, you know, one day for each cohort, and then trying to take a look at how quickly we get the results and whether those testing days work for that purpose. So I'll have more information next Tuesday. I don't have any sense since the letter just went out, how many students and families are going to participate. We encourage participation, but it's not mandated.
And then is there a minimum threshold that we need to meet for the testing, for the testing population in order to consider a significant representative of our school?
No, I did ask that. What's the, what's the minimum percentage of participation? And Jessica and I actually discussed that for us to consider this valid information. But because it is voluntary and we can't compel, short of 100%, it's not great. I mean, I think that if you only have half of the students participating, it could mean that students who are not participating couldn't be positive and infectious. And it's not giving you great information. It depends on what you're using the information for. Is it for peace of mind to have validation that there's not a lot of positive cases in the school? Is it for public health reasons to inform the wider community, to see what community positivity rates might be? There are definitely benefits to general public health, to knowing what the, to having more students tested and staff members tested. But in terms of keeping schools open or opening them more fully, I don't think it has an impact on either of those.
So I have, it's probably too granular a question. So I will start with just saying I was skeptical of this. I think I'm coming around. But when I look at sort of some of the details, I'm a father of two high schoolers. It certainly sort of hits me, and I don't like to talk about me, but I sort of look at sort of some of the details. I see that the cohort BB would be tested, at least under this first initiative, on a Thursday. Are we thinking that those results will be back on a Friday? Or are we thinking that it will be post-Friday? And if those results come back on Friday at 11:00 a.m., what does that mean in a practical matter to kids who are in a school building at 11:00 a.m. on Friday?
Right. I mean, I think that's, that's the key question about how quickly we can, if we're going to test before school and send the tests, you know, have FedEx pick them up and send them to the lab right away, and we here early on Friday, then we can bring the pool in or the pool is already there to be retested. But there's always that concern, if you're testing on a Thursday or Friday, you're going to get results on the weekend. And then we don't have the capacity to bring people in on the weekend to retest. So it could mean that there are, there's somebody positive out there, walking around, spreading, or we tell the pool, you need to quarantine for the weekend, which is the more likely outcome, the sort of voluntary quarantine associated with the pool testing. So the cohort BB is a little at a disadvantage if we're not able to get the results and retest on Friday, but it could impact a weekend. So there's no, there's no perfect day to test. The testing firms tell us that if everybody in the state tries to test on the same day, it's going to take them more than 24 hours to do the test. So there's some advantage to testing on a day when not a lot of districts are testing. And, and so again, we're going to learn a lot as we go through, see what works, see what doesn't work. I know that there are some people who are very much in favor of this testing in our community. And we want to give it a reasonable shot at success and learn from it, and then make good choices afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. That's very helpful. Ms. Bergstrom.
Mr. Vinali, I just wanted to follow up on your question. Dr. Evans, in a case like Mr. Vinali you brought up, are we requiring students to be retested solely through the school district? Or could they go seek their own follow-up testing if they're notified through a stop-the-spread location or private position?
We need to determine as quickly as possible who in the pool is positive, so we can release the rest of the pool to go about their business and their normal lives. And so anybody who signs up is agreeing to come back for the retest as soon as they're notified with the rapid tests and the PCR test that we'll send out for an individual test. And that's, that's going to be an additional cost, by the way, to the, to the district for each, you know, individual retest that we have to send out is going to be, you know, a fairly significant cost if we have a lot of positive pools. So we can't, I mean, people could go and get tested on their own, but the, it would mean that everyone else would have to be quarantined for more days until everybody's test results came back. So I don't think we can do that. People have to agree to follow the process or they can't participate.
I guess I was thinking of the scenario where the test came back and the students would have to be quarantined all weekend. But if Saturday morning their parents chose to take them to a stop-the-spread location, they could potentially have their results back by Sunday morning. And that might actually help us out.
Yeah, that, well, that's, that's true if, if that's the case. I still think we would require them to clean up, well, I mean, if they were tested and found to be positive. There's always the case where there could be two positive people in a pool. So everybody, even if we find the one positive person, we think everyone has to be retested and go through the whole, the same protocol. So they'd still have to come in on Monday and get, be part of the data collection.
Thank you. Ms. Bollinger.
Thank you. One clarification. I thought that in some of the guidance that we had received around if there were a positive test, that member, the other members of the pool would not have to quarantine. They could still carry on with their daily business, including being in school.
Yeah. Originally, the DESC said that if you have a positive pool and everyone comes in and they do the quick test, and you can't identify who the person is, then everyone can just go on their way and you don't have to worry about it. It means that it was either a false positive or somebody was on the tail end of infection. I think that they got enough feedback saying that that makes us all really uncomfortable to think that there might be a positive person out there. That they are now requiring not only the rapid test, but also a PCR test in addition. So everyone gets, you know, the rapid test. And while they're waiting for that to process, they do the, you know, individual PCR test at the nurse's office or the location that we determined at the hospital.
Okay, thank you. I think you might have mentioned that earlier and I just.
Yeah, I mean, the information changed over the course of the, of the pilot process. And that's the most recent information that I have. It could change again, but that's, you know, that's what they're telling us right now.
Okay. And then I'll just add as a plug for the stop-the-spread sites, that Everett's Cataldo ambulance site last Friday, well, we went in and we tested at 5:40 p.m., supposedly about 20 minutes before they were closing. Maybe they were open until 7:00 p.m. But even testing at 5:40 p.m., we were the only people there. And then our results actually came back at 5:15 a.m. the following day. So good to know. Turnaround was good.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bergstrom, is your hand raised again? Or is that?
No, I just didn't put it down.
Okay. So seeing no further questions, I thank you for a very thorough report tonight. And I do want to point out to the committee and everyone that it is nine o'clock and we have a thorough agenda still beyond us. So I thank you and I would like to ask, if possible, that we move on to the next agenda item. Seeing no disagreement with that. Next agenda item is the interim superintendent update. As you all may know, we unanimously selected Dr. Hackett to be the interim superintendent starting July 1. Ms. Bollinger and I spent the weekend getting to know Dr. Hackett via Zoom, socially distanced, of course, and negotiating with him. And I would like to ask Ms. Bollinger to update the committee on where we are and what we learned. If you're ready, Ms. Bollinger.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'll just start with a little recap of the last week since much has happened with February vacation. So the screening team was very happy to bring forward two candidates to school committee last Wednesday for consideration and for interviews. And last Friday, the school committee unanimously approved Dr. Frank Hackett as our interim superintendent, superintendent of schools. So we have subsequently reached agreement with him to a two-year contract, which is in consideration of the many challenges we're facing over the course of this year, including return to school in a pandemic, the Lynch School building project that's already, or that has just advanced to feasibility stage, and then upcoming negotiations with all of our employee unions. So with his 20 cumulative years as a superintendent in Braintree, Pembroke, and several communities in Maine, and his breadth of experience in building projects, strategic planning, lean teams, and authentic learning and listening, he brings the steady, strong leadership that we need to see us through the next 24 months and bring us out on the other side of the pandemic as a stronger community. So we are looking forward to introducing him in an upcoming meeting and then welcoming him on his July 1 start later in the year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bollinger. And the community should know, should have seen the release that was sent out detailing much of this. And I would open up to any questions or comments from the committee. We hope to welcome new interim superintendent at a meeting in the near future to, to welcome him to the community. Seeing no questions, this is a short, but a really good piece of news for us. So, you know, I feel like, you know, too bad we can't stretch out some of the good news and sort of truncate some of the depressing news, but, you know, let's go on from there. I would like to express deep thanks to Ms. Kirby, who spent much of her weekend with us, working over some of the contract issues that we're working on. It was her weekend and I spent many hours on the phone with her and on Zoom with her and write emails. So thank you very, very, very much. Really appreciate it. So with that, I would like to go on to the next agenda item, which is FY22 budget update, which I, let me just get to the page we're on. I don't think we have much, you have much to plan for that, but I did want to give you an opportunity, Dr. Evans, if you had anything you wanted to speak on that issue.
Sure. Very briefly, we're going to keep this as a running agenda item until town meeting in the spring. And so my plan is to finish my analysis this week of the enrollment projections, particularly at the K5 level, to see whether I can recommend any reduction in the budget in terms of some of the positions. One of the things that's still in flux is how many sections of K5 classrooms we will need at Lynch School next year. If we need more than 26, then we'll have to move the four preschool classrooms to Parkhurst in order to make room for that, because there isn't any other space in the building that we can use for that purpose. If we can hold steady at 26, then we'll be able to avoid moving until the following year, where certainly we will need to move the following year. And so we will continue to, to look at enrollment. And I'll have a recommendation for you at the next meeting. I am aware that there have been some discussions about related facility costs for the movement of the four preschool classrooms to Parkhurst. And Ellen Whittamore and the DPW and Chris Nixon and others have been evaluating this. It's still my plan not to make an additional request to the town to cover any of those costs. I think we've identified most of them. But we'll continue to look at that and I'll give you an update in an upcoming meeting.
Thank you very much. And I would ask at the, when we have the next update, would also include any costs for testing that, I realize it's way too early to really sort of have those nailed down, but you know, when they're available, I think it'll be important to have. So thank you very much. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. So I think at the meeting where we voted the budget, we settled on a number, but we kind of postponed some of the line item consensus, waiting for some additional information. So I do look forward to that at our next meeting. Dr. Evans, I wanted to ask, I did log into a Select Board meeting, I think more than a week ago, when our town manager, Lisa Wong, was presenting her, I think it was characterized as a draft budget at the time. She was sharing a live spreadsheet. I must confess, she should have a budget out by now, but if she has, I don't know what her number is. How does the town manager's number compare to the number voted by the school committee? Perhaps Dr. Evans or the chair has that information?
It's the same. I was informed by, let me just say, this is some, one of those games of telephone. I was informed by a member of Finance Committee upon reviewing that, that the number was the same number that we submitted.
Okay. I couldn't follow it fast enough during the actual board meeting. So thank you. Is that your understanding as well, Dr. Evans? Thank you.
So are there any additional questions regarding the budget and the budget development? Seeing none, I would like to move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent evaluation process. I don't know, did the memo make it in? Yes, it did. So you should have in your packet a memo from Chair and Vice Chair regarding the workshop that we held on January 29, regarding superintendent evaluation process. And this purpose of this memo, you were all there. So I don't, I'm not really telling you anything you don't already know. But this was more to put down in paper. But this was more to put down in paper some of the decisions that we made at that time. Obviously, we could always revisit them. And I, I won't, certainly won't go through the entire memo exhaustively, but there's sort of three decisions that we sort of made moving forward. The first was regarding the summative evaluation for Dr. Evans. And we made the decision to follow past practice and have that evaluation performed prior to municipal election in March, March 30th. So we anticipate submission of that review on March 16th. I will be reaching out to you, each of you. This is mostly about sort of the process and the decision there. I'd be reaching out to all of you prior to March 16th about the process there. But basically, there is no change on that. But the second decision that we made was to move our timeline for the evaluation process to move more concurrently with the school year. Desi anticipates a five-step process and it's outlined in the memo. We talked about it again. I'm not telling you anything you didn't already discuss and agree to. But it's sort of in the memo outlines the, the timeline of that process and that the self-assessment would take place in July. The analysis and goal setting would place, take place in August through September. And that, at that time, it would include approving, approval by school committee of focus indicators and the goal, mutual agreement of those. Implementation of the plan would then proceed directly from there with a formative assessment right about now, by like, normally by right now, late February or early March. And that the summative evaluation would take place in June. So this would align better with the school year and better with the district goals and really better with the superintendent goals, which run for a year. They don't really run just through March. And we've seen in the past that we're often looking at superintendent goals and trying to anticipate where they will be in June based on our March review. So I think this will be very helpful moving forward to sort of have this spelled out more explicitly. Obviously, the committee can choose to follow these guidelines. There's often attenuating circumstances that cause things to move from different times. But we wanted to sort of have sort of spelled out what we would anticipate doing moving forward. And then the last decision, I don't want to call it decision, sort of thought that we had at that meeting was that by moving the summative evaluation to June, it opens up the possibility that some school committee members may have left or may have joined the committee, given the timing of the municipal election in March. So we agreed that the chair may, at their discretion, solicit feedback from members who are no longer on the committee. But all members should only be giving feedback for the time period in which they were school committee members. And the chair should wait that feedback accordingly. So I wanted to get those all down on paper. I, I certainly hope I didn't inaccurately capture what we talked about in the workshop, because it's often hard to get several hour workshop into a single memo. So I would be welcome any questions or comments from the committee. Certainly happy to revise the memo. This is not policy. It's simply a memo representing what we discussed. And I'm happy to revise it so we can have it memorialize some of the things that we talked about as we move on into the, the new year. Mr. Nixon?
Well, if, if you'd like me to, I wanted to actually share that diagram we worked on that you included in the memo. I have it here and it might be easier for those who are, I mean, it, it's the visual representation of everything you just said. And I, there we go. I, I think that, I think this would be, I think this was helpful not just to us, but for, you know, for future school committee members and also for the incoming school committee. Many of us are visual learners. You know, this underscores what you said, that if, if, if this is a circular process, it's got to start somewhere. And it really, we, we think should start in July with the superintendent self-assessment. So August and September then spent thinking about analysis of that goal-setting plan development and so forth. So I won't repeat everything you said, but I think this is a very help, a helpful diagram that would, you know, be helpful to the next school committee. And, you know, to your point, we have municipal elections at the end of March. So you see there step four by February or March is the formative assessment and evaluation. And so you were just saying, Brian, that for, you know, there would be opportunities for outgoing school committee members who wish to do so to still participate somehow in that summit of evaluation in June. In other words, it's two pieces. You were just, I think, clarifying new school committee members would be expected to review based on the, the experience that they've had in a really short amount of time. But similarly, that window is still open for outgoing school committee members.
So I agree with everything you just said, Mr. Nixon. And I actually, I thank you for putting up the image. It's sometimes not fair because I'm looking at the image and you all are looking at the image. And it's quite frequently I forget that viewers on Zoom or at home don't have the benefit of the packet that we have. So thank you. Dishful questions or comments on this process? So I, I think that this will be just helpful for the new committee as we look at the next year. So thank you very much and we'll, we'll keep on keeping on. With that, I'd like to move to the next agenda item, which is a policy subcommittee update. You should also have a memo in the packet from the policy subcommittee. Just want to get to the right page. And while it says that I, as chair, will be giving the presentation, I'm actually deferring to Ms. Bergstrom. Ms. Bergstrom and I are the current members of the policy subcommittee. And I would like to defer to her to discuss what we've discussed and the recommendations that came out of recent policy subcommittee meeting. Ms. Bergstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Vinalia. So the policy subcommittee did recently have a meeting. We had two agenda items for this meeting, which was to review our policies as they relate to curriculum in the district and an update on previous recommendations that this policy subcommittee made regarding the high school handbook and something referred to in the handbook as the N rule. In reviewing our policies on curriculum, we actually found that we had two redundant policies on curriculum that were identical. This is the, the sort of the low hanging fruit that we have to talk to you about today. So we feel that policy BDEE that you can see is redundant with policy BDR E and that they cover the exact same information, the exact same content. It's just that policy BDEE is numbered one through eight and policy BDR is numbered eight through 16, but they contain exactly the same content. I did reach out and to the, to Mr. Nixon, because he was part of the school committee when these policies were first put in place. And he looked through his information as well to just confirm that this wasn't a missing policy. And it does appear to just in fact be a redundant policy from when mislabeling and misnumbering when the policy manual was updated. So that would, that is going to be one of our recommendations and that is sort of what I would refer to as the low hanging fruit for what we discovered from our investigations. The other thing that the policy subcommittee did was we reviewed policy BDEE, policy IGA, which is curriculum development, and IGD, which is curriculum adoption. And in reviewing these policies, we found that it's really in the purview of the district to design and implement curriculum for the district, to quote directly from our policy manual. To be successful, curriculum development must be a collaborative enterprise involving staff and administrators using their professional experience. However, it is within the purview of the school committee to also have a standing curriculum subcommittee and to appoint members of this committee to that subcommittee. And that each year, this subcommittee should set goals that are aligned with the district goals and to address curriculum topics as they emerge. The committee generally, according to our policies, consists of the superintendent potentially, the assistant superintendent, and the school committee designees. Any additional members or stakeholders that would be included in this committee would be invited to attend as necessary to get feedback on particular topics or around particular issues. It's this sub, it's the policy subcommittee's suggestion that this, that the curriculum subcommittee would meet no less than once monthly for the year. Looking at our, our goals that we have had for the district and current curriculum issues, we anticipate agenda topics for the next year could include K-12 literacy, given the newly published guidelines from the state of Massachusetts on early literacy. And given that the staff itself is reviewing three state-approved kindergarten screeners, that that seems like a topic that would be rich for discussion as a place to start for this committee. Also this year, our educators are undertaking two PBAs, project-based learning assessments that are common across the district. And that, that we have found them to be a valuable insight to curriculum and assessment in the district. And it's aligned with our goals with the MCIEA that the district has been a part of since 2016. So we would anticipate that this could be an additional topic as a starting point potentially for this committee. I'll stop there and take any questions anybody might have on that initial research and recommendation of the committee, if anybody has any.
Any questions for the committee?
Seeing none, I will, seeing none, I will continue on. So we also looked at a recommendation that we made in 20, on the 2019 handbook policy that was the N rule. It's in the high school handbook dated for 1820 and you have a copy of what the N rule looks like there. The policy subcommittee previously in agreement with the school committee had advised that this rule should be stricken or revised from the handbook as it's not consistent with the strategic vision for the district. And Mr. Mahoney was amenable to that at the time. And we anticipate that the, in the 2020-21 Winchester High School handbook, that Mr. Mahoney will have that revised for us or removed from the handbook. Just a reminder to the committee at the time, the school committee and the policy subcommittee at the time found that the McCall Middle School handbook did have appropriate guidance around these issues. So we've also continued to encourage Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney to collaborate to align their policies. So the recommended action items out of this meeting would be to appoint members to the curriculum subcommittee, to eliminate the redundant policy, and to direct Chair Vinalia to continue the collaboration with Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney to ensure review of the 2019 recommendations. Are there any questions on that? Mr. Nixon?
So I, I just wanted to share a couple of things. The, the alphabet soup of policymaking can really get us all tripped up. Ms. Bergstrom's right. I, I went to the way back Google machine and found the version of the second reading of the policy. And what I wanted to share with you all tonight, when we look online for our policy manual, this is what parents see when they go fishing, we see BDE-E, and that is in fact the one we should be referring to. And I think that's what Ms. Bergstrom's memo is intending. The cover sheet in our packet refers to a BDE-R. The backup material refers to a BDR/E. So we, there, there isn't an R-E and there shouldn't be an E-R. So if, if it helps, just as a housekeeping measure, I'm happy to move that we strike, to the extent one exists in Freedom's records at Parkhurst, we should strike BDE-R from the policy manual. It's, it's essentially a duplicate of our policy on the curriculum subcommittee. I think that's what Ms. Bergstrom's looking for. I'd be happy to make that motion just as a housekeeping measure. And then we still have our curriculum subcommittee policy in place.
But I, I appreciate that. Just for convenience, that's an action item. And instead of voting, as long as everybody's amenable, instead of voting to go out of order and then voting that, we just do that when we get there.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I had one page of the agenda on. I didn't realize that was coming up subsequently, so I apologize.
That is, no, no, it's an action item. And because we do our discussion and action items separately, it should really be at the same time, but just to save our time, no reason to do it now.
I understand.
I just addressed it now, Mr. Nixon, since it's addressed in the policy memo you received as well. And perhaps that may save us time in a minute. Are there any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And let me just look. I believe that puts us at the end of our reports and discussion items and moves us on to action items. And I would like to welcome Ms. Connolly to the table. See if I can successfully do that. I think she might be info with the and actually, Ms. Bollniers, if you could do that, invite Ms. Connolly. That we have, the next agenda item is vote to accept a WIFI grant. I would like to actually, I, I, I'm always a little gun shy. Dr. Ellen, I don't know if you're going to introduce this and then move on to Ms. Connolly? Or if we're just going to welcome Ms. Connolly to the table to talk about some of the grants we have? I'm always a little shy.
Welcoming her is fine. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. It's 9:30 and I get a little tired, so I get a little lost. Welcome, Ms. Connolly. Thank you for coming tonight and tell us a little bit about what you're bringing. We're always thrilled. This is the best part of the meeting.
All right. Well, I will be brief because you have had a long meeting and you have more. We're actually bringing you three grants tonight. The largest is a $26,000 grant to support an extension of the WIFI Academy. As you remember, when we first made that grant, we said after the first two weeks, we were going to talk to parents, see how it went, and if it went well, we would extend it. So we had tremendous feedback from the parents that participated and the students who participated. We filled nearly 2,000 slots, which isn't equal to 2,000 students, because many students participated in more than one class. 97% rated it as good or excellent. And I think that the comments we heard from parents were what caused us to decide we needed to do this again, which was from the parents whose kids loved it. They really loved it. Even children who were not enjoying learning on Zoom because of the variety of the offerings and because they were very interactive, were very energized by them. And so we were excited to hear that. We also heard, as you have heard more times than I imagine you can count, there are a lot of students that don't do well on Zoom and that don't love Zoom. And providing them additional enrichment learning on Zoom was not helpful to them. So for those families, they tried it and it didn't work out. But we heard from enough families that it did work out, that we determined another two weeks would be worth doing. And so we're excited to offer that. The two weeks will be starting in March 15th, so the weeks of March 15th and 16th. It will be the same as the last grant, that there will be eight providers and students will be, will have the opportunity to sign up during times when they are in the remote phase of their learning, when they are at home during the school day. The Remote Academy again will be able to sign up for whatever classes fit with their times. And again, none of this, like this whole year, is perfect. Nothing has fit perfectly. Some of the offerings that we have this time, I think are really fun. We're doing an animal Tai Chi, which is a combination of storytelling and physical movement that I think kids are going to love. Something called Trash Talk, that students are going to dissect all of the packaging that comes around a Happy Meal and see how long it takes for it to decompose. We also have a sequel to the Sharks. The Sharks were very popular. Children love Sharks. So that is another thing that, that we're offering. The second grant that we're bringing forth tonight is a $2,250 grant to allow all of the district's fourth graders to participate in an immigration, culture, and community virtual field trip, which is offered by Lowell Mills. Again, a very high-quality program that our district has participated in in person. Again, it comes with the same caveat as we had around the People of the Dawn, which is typically, we do not fund field trips. But during this pandemic, a virtual learning experience seems to be pretty important. And I will say back to People of the Dawn, I participated and watched it. And it was really good. And I heard from a number of families that they enjoyed it. I will tell you, my husband, who is a programmer, who sits in another office in our home and typically does not pay much attention to what I'm doing, and in fact, might not notice if I died during the day, was listening to this and came running in and went, who is that? That's really good. And I anticipate the Lowell Mills will be just as good. And then finally, the third grant is very small, but I think it's a really cool idea. At McCall, they have continued their coding class, or rather, their coding club. And the students were interested in very small programmable computers that would help them learn to code. So it's a $175 grant. It will buy 10 of those very small computers that will remain with the school for next year. And we hope give students, again, an opportunity to find joy and excitement. So those are, those are the offerings I bring to you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that you still have more to do. So if you are good, I am good too. I believe the total with my math was 26,425. But if you have any questions about the academy or anything else, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Connolly. I want to, I sound like a broken record because I'm always thanking you, but thank you. And all the feedback I received about the WIFI Academy was all positive. I did not hear anything but positive feedback about that. And that is rare in Winchester that you get 100% positive feedback. So I'm thrilled to see it's happening again. My only complaint is that it's not for adults. So if you, if you could put an adult slot or two, or maybe just a school committee slot, it doesn't need to be all adults, just a school committee slot, that would be great.
We will take that under consideration, Brian. I want to, I want to do the, the shark one. I actually sat in on several of them, and they were really fun. One of the coolest things that I saw two educators do that was just so brilliant was they were working with kindergarteners and they taught them American Sign Language for yes and no. And so the students remained muted. But when they introduced a concept and they wanted to make sure the kids were listening, they would say, okay, remember, I showed you the signs. You know, did you get this? Show me a yes. Show me a no. Kids were engaged, and she didn't have the horrifying experience of unmuting 15 kindergarteners. And if anybody's ever been in a room with 15 kindergarteners and unmuted them, you know where that goes. So that I thought was just like, I was like, that is a really good idea.
That is brilliant. Unmuting 15 adults is hard enough. Any additional, any questions or comments?
One quick plug then, before, before I go.
I was hoping you'd give a plug for something that's coming up.
Yes, indeed, because one of the things that was very gratifying about the academy was hearing back from families that they enjoyed it so much that they wanted to support WIFI. And we were able to say to them, so the coolest thing coming up is instead of doing a trivia bee, we are doing the WIFI bee in a bag. Some of you who follow social media have seen the indomitable Mai Harrison in her full bee costume. We were down there at Starbucks when it was a little cold on Sunday, selling our bee bags. And we do still have more bags. I was so excited about how well the sales were going. I ordered some extra bags. So for those of you who haven't bought your bee bag yet, there is an opportunity. We will be delivering them to people's homes next Wednesday. And they've got everything in them that you need to have a trivia bee, the questions, snacks, the bee, the bee headbands, all kinds of things. And I think it's going to be very fun. So that is on our website at wiffy.org. And I will also be at the high school on Monday morning between 10 and 12 outside the school. And I believe we will have some extra bags to sell there for people who haven't bought online. And I know some of you have signed up, and I'm excited. I hope you enjoy it. It's, it's a little different way to reimagine trivia. So all in a pandemic year.
Thank you very much. We already have our temporary bee tattoos. So we are, we are moving, we, we go all in on this. So. Mr. Nixon?
Would you like a motion?
I would. You can do either three motions or one big motion.
One big one. I move to accept with gratitude three grants from the Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence in the amount of $26,425 in total as presented.
I second.
Roll call vote required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanies?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. And can't wait to, can't wait to see how some of these go.
We will report back.
And I, I'm going to put you back as an attendee, although you might just say it's nine thirty, I'm done. But I want to give you that opportunity to decide for yourself. So thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a vote to approve the operations coordinator job description. And I'm not sure where we are anymore. Dr. Evans, I believe that is something you were going to address.
Sure, yeah. So at previous meetings, we've discussed the need for an additional support person in central office to support operations, particularly with a very busy year coming up next year with the new superintendent having to support several major building-related efforts, including the Lynch Project and negotiations for four new contracts or six new contracts. We have two pending. There's just a lot of heavy lifting on the part of central office in terms of management of operations and finance. And so we had developed a job description that covers multiple aspects of operations. We're asking for your support. I know that there was some concern that it was too generalized and with too many different functions. And like any job description, after we interview and hire, we may come back to you and revise, ask you to revise the job description, approved job description. But right now, we'd like to keep it as is. It doesn't mean that it'll be funded. It is included in the budget for FY22, but school committee could still make adjustments to that funding. So right now, we're just looking for an approval of the job description. And either Ellen or I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there questions or comments on the job description as presented?
I'm happy to make a motion.
I would welcome a motion to approve the job description.
I move to approve the job description for the operations coordinator position.
Second.
So any discussion before I call a vote? Seeing, seeing none. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanies?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Thank you for bringing us back to us. And thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a vote to approve the program of studies. We have the two program of studies that were presented by Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney. I don't even remember when, three weeks ago, maybe. And Dr. Evans, can you speak to any changes that may have been made, if any?
Sure. There have been no further changes since the initial presentation. And we would appreciate a vote to approve so that we can proceed with course selection with the revised programs of studies.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there any questions? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I move to approve the Winchester High School Program of Studies and the McCall Middle School Program of Studies for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanies?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Please give our thanks to Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney for all their work on this. And I know we'll be seeing them again soon for other things, but you'll probably see them first. And with that, that moves us on to, sorry, this is a large hand, a larger packet, so I'm many, many pages into it now. The next agenda item is vote to approve the superintendent evaluation focus areas. This was one of the things that we discussed at our, our workshop. And Dr. Evans, if you would like care to present the focus indicators you intend to propose?
Happy to. The information for this is on, starts on page 61. As you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education put out revised focus indicators for administrators and for teachers that are aligned with the COVID-19 pandemic challenges. And as part of the process of streamlining the superintendent's evaluation, I was asked to select some focus indicators from the rubric that I've also attached beginning on page 69 that align with both the district goals and my superintendent goals so that school committee members can give more focused feedback, particularly in a pandemic. What I would say to you is, I always welcome feedback. And I think as I come to the end of my career, I've been blessed to have worked with great school committee members who helped me to grow. In this pandemic year, you have all been working very, very hard. I would encourage you to spend minimal time on the superintendent's evaluation for retiring superintendent and put your focus on other things. But I do always welcome your feedback and happy to answer any questions. I selected indicators that were fairly well-aligned with the goals. But you can always feel free to give additional feedback on other indicators as you see fit.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Mr. Nixon?
So I'm really, I'm supportive of this, and this is the second and last time that I'll, I'll bring this up again. But I just wanted to underscore the point, particularly for those four who are running for Winchester School Committee. So this is one of those weird, this is like a half step in the process, right? To get us into sync for this diagram that you were describing earlier, Mr. Vernalia. So the, although this is sort of a formality tonight, to come up with the, sort of the, the metrics that will evaluate Dr. Evans, the goal is moving forward after that self-assessment in July under step two as a part of analysis, goal-setting, and plan development, is to actually have that conversation with the superintendent, ask the superintendent to bring forward focus indicators, let the school committee reflect on that against the goals, and then have a discussion and settle on really what's going to deframe the analysis throughout the year. So this is a peculiar time to be doing this, but we're only going to do it now once. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Agreed. Are there additional questions or comments on the selected focus indicators? Seeing none, I would welcome a, I think we, the action recommended, I think we actually have to, it says action recommended none, but I think that it would be cleanest if we vote to, I don't know, approve is not the right word, vote to.
Accept?
Accept. Thank you. That's a better word. Vote to accept if someone would make such a motion.
So moved. Vote to accept Dr. Evans' focus indicators as presented.
Second.
A roll call vote required. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanies?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Really appreciate you getting these to us. And with that, we'll move us on to, we do not have minutes to approve tonight. I anticipate that we'll have, we have quite a few meetings scheduled. We have a meeting a short week from tonight. And I anticipate that we'll have the minutes that we would like to have tonight ready by next week. So stay tuned. If you love minutes, you'll love that meeting. But with that, we move on to the, the vote to eliminate the redundant policy BDR-dash-E. And Mr. Nixon, I believe you made a motion. I would welcome you to, unless there's any further discussion on this, to make the motion to eliminate redundant policy BDR-dash-E.
Yeah. And so what, what I, and I apologize, I was saying it clumsily earlier. If you look in the packet, the, the cover, I believe, refers to BDE-dash-R, and the memo refers to BDR-dash-E. Neither one of them should be there. And when you go online, the policy that you're looking for is BDE-dash-E. That's what I find when I go to the website. So perhaps this was just an errant copy that was sitting in the, in the file up at Parkhurst, perhaps. So.
If I may just say, that BDR-dash-E is actually online in our policy manual. If you do a search for BDR-dash-E, you will get this policy. It's directly from the policy manual online. If you search, if you do a global search for BDR-dash-E, that policy will come up, and that's directly where it came from.
All right. So I guess, not being as technically savvy as you are, I'm just sort of looking at how they're listed in alphabetical order, and I wasn't seeing it.
But go to a search of the whole document, which I don't know how to do, looking at what you're doing. You will find BDR. I know I do a global search on my, my Chrome. So if that's Chrome, there should be a way to do a search up in the upper left. And not, not in there, but above. You should be able to do a search.
Well, so the point I was going to make, Mr. Chairman, is just that the correct policy is the one that would appear to novices such as myself when we're scrolling through these things online. So BD, BDE-dash-E, which I think Ms. Bergstrom is suggesting is what we should be running with, and I concur, is what I see. So I would move to strike any BDR-dash-E or any BDE-dash-R from any paper record we have at Parkhurst. This is actually the correct policy.
Is there a second? But just to be clear, the motion should be to strike BDR-dash-E. BDR-dash-E. And if you do a, again, if you do a search of the document.
That's fine. So, so moved.
I second.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bolanies?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous. Thank you to, I guess to Ms. Bergstrom and myself for finding this redundant policy that no one else can find. Secret.
Saving the world one policy at a time, Brian.
Exactly. It's one, one page shorter now. With that, we will move on to the chair report. And I gave the update that I wanted to give at the beginning about the meeting on Thursday. I don't have it pulled up right now. Mr. Nixon, can you remind me what time that meeting is on Thursday night about the Morocco Culver and Morocco Life Extension Program?
Sure, I can remind you. Let me just pull that up. So we have a presentation Thursday, February 26th, February 25th, excuse me, at 6:00 PM. I do think there is a link you can find on the town website. I think the town homepage has been updated as well with some information on this, and that'll be populated as time goes on.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that we said that again. And that is my, the entire team of my chair report that I had Mr. Nixon do for me. I'm going to do that from now on. Dr. Evans, do you have a superintendent report?
Just very quickly, we are anxious to finalize sections for next year. We're hoping to be fully back in person. And anyone who has not yet registered for next year, who might be homeschooled or private school or an incoming K or one student, please reach out. Our registration information is right on our website, pretty easy to find. I'd encourage registration as soon as possible. Parent-to-parent is also hosting the annual kindergarten information night on March 11th at 7:00 PM. It's a webinar, and we encourage all incoming kindergarten and maybe some first-grade parents who might not have been here in kindergarten to attend that program that's been very well-received and with a partnership with Parent-to-Parent. More information about it will be coming. But if you have friends or neighbors who you know will be coming back next year who have not yet registered, please be sure that they do so with our registrar as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. I appreciate the brevity. With that, we'll move on to future agenda items. We have a school choice public hearing and vote scheduled for March 16th, which has been properly advertised in the newspaper. We have a K-5 literacy review update. We have superintendent's 2020-21 evaluation. The plan will be for that to be on March 16th, but you will be hearing from me directly about timeline for that as members of the committee. We have a school transportation discussion as a future agenda item. And we have school handbooks. We will make sure that the memo that was given will be made available to the principals. to the uh principals of the middle and high school regarding school handbooks. Of course, we also have an elementary school handbook. Um, are there additional uh agenda items that we should be having here? Ms. Bergstrom.
Uh, vote to appoint members to the curriculum subcommittee.
So that's a good question. We should have that, and I think it's something we need to talk about whether that should happen um prior to or subsequent to March thirtieth. So uh, I will take that offline and uh talk with you and Dr. Evans about the timing of that, but I will add that because we do need to have that. I just don't have a date. Mr. Nixon.
So, yeah, I forgive me if you if you mentioned it and I missed it. Um, we've talked, I think, at our budget hearing about costs necessary to implement Parkhurst for preschool, and I know Dr. Evans said we'll hear more about enrollment plans next week and the potential, let's say, the need for that in the fall. But I I'd like to see some discussion of the Parkhurst plans, just so we understand what it is and if we need to allocate resources for it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. I hope you will look in your inbox that you have an invitation from me to meet and talk about that very topic um at the end of this week, uh, if and when you find time to do it.
I did see that, and I have I do have one other item I'd love to share with the committee before we adjourn tonight. Once you get through new agenda items, I have some pleasant news to show.
So we have both of those. I would welcome Mr. Nixon to share his pleasant news before we adjourn.
So it took seven years to get some new sinks at the Morocco Elementary School. I just want to put in a plug for um how I I want to thank Town Meeting. I want to thank DPW for getting these spaces ready. Um, uh, over school vacation week, um, our contractor went in there and replaced um the sinks um in the uh in the kindergarten and the first grade spaces that we've talked about. These are the original sort of rotting steel sinks. Um, we were, uh, as I think you know, we made a decision to um not only replace, here we see Ms. West, this is a kindergarten classroom. We had double van, double basins in the kindergarten rooms. Our youngest learners take a while to wash their hands. One of the things we learned in going into the process was some of our first graders who still sing the ABC song while washing their hands takes so long that we were having to cut short instruction on some days. So we did make the decision to give our first graders double sinks as well, so I think our first grade teachers are very happy about that. Um, it only took seven years, and it's not the whole school, but they look really great. And uh I just want to thank Town Meeting for the funding support. Um, pretty miserable conditions what we had before, and so this is just one example of how we can extend the life of Morocco um until a replacement comes along, you know, by twenty twenty eight to twenty thirty. These kinds of improvements really make a difference for our kids and our teachers, so wanted to share that with you all tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. I love good news, so I I feel like we maybe we should add an agenda item, good news of the day, um, every meeting. Um, we have our next meeting dates on March second. That's a morning meeting. March sixteenth is an evening meeting, and April sixth is a morning meeting. Uh, unless there's any other business, I would welcome a motion to adjourn at almost ten o'clock.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Nixon.
Hi.
Ms. Marshant.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, vote is unanimous. Thank you all for a long meeting, but a really good meeting, and uh have a great night, everyone. Thanks to WinCam, as always. Thank you very much.
Bye, guys.
Thank you all.